Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Today is Tuesday, August 5th, and we're glad you're joining us here this evening. We'll begin by calling the meeting to order, and an invocation by Pastor DA Brown from the Way Fellowship of the Triad.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Lord, thanks for this day. Father, thank you for this town that we get to live in. Lord, thank you for our elected officials, Father, for choosing them to be in these positions. Lord, we pray that you would keep them safe, Lord, and all others in our community. Lord, we pray that tonight that you would give them wisdom and discernment for the future plans that you have for this town and its residents. And, Lord, we thank you that we can seek your will and walk by faith. And, Lord, most of all, we thank you what you did for us on the cross. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. As Mayor and on behalf of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen, there are times when we can celebrate something amazing, outstanding, and very worthy of celebration in our community, and tonight is one such occasion. A longtime town employee was recognized as the Public Services Employee of the Year by the American Public Works Association for the entire state of North Carolina. We're very proud of the accomplishments and achievements and service of Jeff Meeks. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Doran Maltba, Director of Public Services, and perhaps some of the other public services staff, and Mr. Meeks to come forward. So Jeff Meeks began his service with the town of Kernersville as an Equipment Operator One in 2002. Was recognized in the town of Kernersville with the Brady Mullinax Community Service Award in 2006. Brady Mullinax was a longtime Kernersville resident, a beekeeper, and very influential in our community, and retired from the town of Kernersville after many years of working, especially in the water area. Back then, Kernersville had its own water system, and Brady Mullinax had a lot of expertise for water quality and service. It was an inspiration to all of us who knew him, who always said, "If the job is big or small, do it well."
Or don't do it at all.
That's right. That's right. So Jeff, I've seen you working hard throughout the years for the town, and I really, truly appreciate all you do. So it is such an honor to celebrate with you the award by the 2025 American Public Works Association of North Carolina Herman Drake Award for Outstanding Service in the State of North Carolina for Solid Waste Employees. And I will turn this microphone over to Doran Maltba for more.
Well, the Herman Drake Award was created after a long, long-serving employee of the state. He worked for Rocky Mount for 50 years. And so when he retired, they created this award to honor a solid waste employee not in a supervisory position for their dedication and service to their community. And so we nominate, all the communities that have solid waste get to nominate a candidate if they want to, and a board selects. And I got to talk to the board members who chose the nominee. And I said, "You know, I've been in this position. I've been one to have to vote, and sometimes you wonder, they're all good candidates, but did you actually make the right choice?" Well, I got to tell them this time they actually did, because when Jeff's supervisors told him he won, you know, of course, he was excited. And then they said, "You get to go to the beach for a week to the solid waste conference." The next thing out of Jeff's mouth was, "Who's going to run my route?" So that tells you why this man was nominated for this and why he won it, and congratulations.
Congratulations. I know everyone wants to shake your hand. And he got away before we could, but let's everyone give Jeff a big round of applause. Thank you. And I know you said you didn't want to say anything during this, but we so appreciate all that you do and continue to do for the town of Kernersville. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Anyone who's not here for a ceremonial thing will go on with the rest of the meeting, but if you were here for a ceremonial thing, it's absolutely fine to leave, so thank you. All right. The next items on our agenda are public hearings. That's under Section 1 of the agenda. There's guidelines for our public hearings printed on the front page of the agenda. They're on the screen. They're... Many of you are very familiar with them, but for those who are not, I'll do a quick review. When an agenda item is denoted as a public hearing, persons attending have an opportunity to address the Board of Aldermen regarding the item under consideration. Those speaking in favor, speaking first, and those against, speaking second. Proponents and opponents shall each be given 20 minutes of time to speak and may allow one speaker to utilize that time or allocate the time amongst different speakers. In the event that either proponents or opponents have not designated a speaker or speakers to represent that view, the mayor will divide the 20 minutes by the number of speakers wishing to address the board. After the opponents speak, the mayor will allow the proponents five minutes for rebuttal. If the proponents choose to exercise this option, the opponents will also have five minutes for rebuttal. In the event that the proponents do not present a rebuttal, the opponents shall be given no further time to speak. Sometimes cases are related. They may require a public hearing, but they may be related, so we, in that situation, hear them together. So Item 1A is a public hearing on rezoning. David Pachella, Agent for Owner JMJ Holdings LLC, for a general rezoning from Limited Industrial and General Industrial to General Industrial, or GI, for property located at 635 Graves Street, north of Graves Street and west of Grayland, containing a total of 3.75 plus or minus acres and being all of the pin as indicated on the agenda, which is zoning docket K-828, requesting all GI, which is General Industrial, uses, and consideration of an ordinance rezoning said property. First, I'll recognize our Community Development Director, Catherine Garner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first case tonight is a general rezoning. Petitioner is David Pachella, Agent for JMJ Holdings LLC as the owner. It is a split-zone property, as you noted, General Industrial and Light Industrial to General Industrial for a parcel that's approximately 3.75 acres. The applicant is seeking to clean up the zoning discrepancy on the site by rezoning it to just General Industrial, which is intended to accommodate a wide range of assembling, fabricating, and manufacturing activities. Surrounding properties are zoned as Light Industrial, Highway Business, and General Industrial. So this is over on Graves Street before the intersection with Grayland. The current land use plan identifies this area as industrial, and it also notes the area as within the East Mountain Street corridor. All General Industrial uses are already permitted at this site because a majority of it already falls under the zoning. So most of the site already being zoned GI. GI is already allowed on the site with the one exception of the Limited Industrial or the Light Industrial sliver. So the site will no longer be able to utilize the Limited Industrial uses as provided in the staff report and highlighted in yellow. The request to rezone the property from General Industrial and Limited Industrial to General Industrial is in conformance with all the zoning requirements set in the UDO and the land use requirements set by the land use plan. So only a change in use will occur, eliminating the Limited Industrial uses. And the General Industrial uses are consistent with the surrounding area and the site itself as it is already developed. Planning Board and staff recommend approval of the requested rezoning and amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance for Case K-828. Finding the rezoning is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and is further both reasonable and in the public interest because the request to rezone to the General Industrial zoning district is consistent with the land use plan as adopted. This was heard at the July Planning Board meeting with all members present voting in favor. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the board have any questions? This is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. You could give your name and your address. It can be your business address for the record. Hang on a minute, Dave. Curtis, get your check. Has microphone.
There we go.
If you could start over, we won't count it against your time.
Again, good evening. I'm Dave Pachella with Maynard Nexon in Greensboro. I'm at 800 Green Valley Road, Suite 500, Greensboro 27408. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is JMJ Holdings. This is all, that's the owner of the property, Finzer Roller, actually operates at the property. And I'm going to be very brief. I'm just going to emphasize a few of the points that were already made. I think this is fairly uncontroversial. See, how do I get this to work? Okay. Okay, thanks. The first slide just kind of gives you an aerial overview of the broader region. You can see in red the particular parcel. As we look at the next slide, oops, too far. This is the very specific parcel. The point that has been made already is that this is partially GI in the yellowish-orange, and then it's LI in the, kind of the greenish color. And we're trying to unify it all as GI, make it consistent. As has been noted by staff, this is identified in the land use plan for industrial. It's part of the East Mountain Street corridor, which is an area designated in part for manufacturing, which is one of the things that would be at use here. The existing proposed industrial zonings are appropriate and in conformity with the currently designated land use plan areas. In the land use plan, in the map in which you've got the different areas designated for different land uses, it's a little hard to see because it's small here, but the gratiated area for industrial is up in the circled area, which is where this location is. Again, this is already designated in the land use plan for industrial. The staff, as you've already heard, has recommended this for approval, with it being consistent with the land use plan. At the Planning Board, it was unanimous, 6-0 with zero opposition, approving a recommendation for approval. So with that, we respectfully request that this be rezoned. I have Marty Finzer here, to the extent there are any questions. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Does the board have any questions, discussion, or motion?
I don't. I recommend approval, per staff's recommendations.
Got a motion for approval?
Second.
I think I had two seconds.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. The motion was by Mayor Proton Thompson. Second by Alderman Gorham. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. When do you, Mr. Pachella, when do you plan to get started? When does your client plan to start?
Pardon me?
When does your client plan to start their improvements to the building?
Apparently ninety days.
Okay. Well, thank you. Congratulations. We look forward to you being here in Kernersville. All right. Or being here in Kernersville in this new facility, so thank you. All right. We are on to Item B and Item C, which are public hearings on the Kernersville Development Plan and a public hearing on a rezoning. The development plan is Item B. All development plan amendments, even though they're necessitated by a proposed zoning case, are styled as brought by the town manager. So that's Curtis Swisher, Agent for the Town of Kernersville, for consideration of an amendment to the Kernersville Development Plan to amend the land use plan from commercial neighborhood scale to medium-density residential, and to amend the thoroughfare plan to remove the west-to-east portion of the proposed Linville Springs Extension for a property generally located southwest of the intersection of Pine Grove Road and Linville Springs Road, containing a total of 17.9 more or less acres and being a portion of the pin as listed on the agenda. Zoning docket KDP, Kernersville Development Plan 75, and consideration of a resolution amending that development plan. And Item C, this is the rezoning, Amanda Hoderin, Agent for the Owner Combs, Inc., for conditional rezoning from GOS, General Office Special, to RS-7C, Residential Single Family Conditional, and to remove the neighborhood scale Commercial Overlay District for the same property, 17.9 more or less acres, and being a portion of the pin as indicated on the agenda. Petitioner requests approval of a conditional use site plan titled Linville Springs Road Subdivision, Combs, Inc., zoning docket K-759-A2. And this had some changes to the staff's recommendation based on the Planning Board public hearings. I think tonight we would be considering that recommendation by the Planning Board, which includes the changes discussed and developed at the Planning Board meeting. All right. I will turn this over at the moment to Ms. Garner for her presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the custom, we're going to go through both the Kernersville Development Plan and the rezoning, one in front of the other, but I'll stop for questions after the development plan in case there are any. The land use plan amendment is proposed from Commercial Neighborhood Scale to Medium Density Residential for a portion of the pin that was listed in the agenda. And this is running parallel with the rezoning case that we'll discuss second. The site is currently designated as Commercial Neighborhood Scale because of the original rezoning, so the K-759. And so with this new rezoning, we would propose to update the land use plan to recognize the rezoning. Medium Density Residential is the land use plan designation that staff is recommending because of the units per acre. So our ordinance defines, or our land use plan defines, Medium Density Residential as zero to seven units per acre. The site proposed density is 2.63 units per acre. And the associated zoning district, RS-7C, is primarily intended to accommodate high-density, single-family detached dwellings in urban areas. This may be suitable for activity centers where public facilities, including public water and sewer, public roads, parks, and other governmental support services are available. We find that the land use plan amendment is needed for a few things or can be justified by a few things. So increased economic development in town has increased the demand for housing. The data continues to show that new house starts continue despite setbacks from the pandemic. We're getting this data with our comp plan update, too, that our population in the past 20-ish years has grown by 65%. Demographic shifts have changed what buyers are looking for or people who are looking to live in Kernersville are looking for in a house. We're also seeing that infrastructure improvements are tying some loose ends together up on this side of town. So the Macy Grove extension from North Main Street to Pine Grove is expected to be open to traffic in July 2026. We've confirmed that with NC DOT. So Medium Density Residential then can act as a buffer between the existing single-family residential, the commercial development along Pine Grove Road, particularly at this intersection in Kernersville Middle School, which is located to the south. We are also proposing an amendment to the Thoroughfare and Street Plan, which is the guide for future road development in Kernersville. And it looks at, based on where population may go or development may go, where will we need additional roads? And so there are two future roads that are shown on the Thoroughfare and Street Plan as it exists. We're also looking at updating this as part of our comprehensive plan, but we would propose to update this one now. So the north and south portion of the proposed Linville Springs expansion would be completed if the associated rezoning is approved, because that's essentially the road into the development on the site plan. So it's an extension of Wooddale Drive across Linville Springs. The east-to-west portion of proposed Linville Springs expansion is proposed to be removed. And I want to be very clear that this is not the changes that we're looking for DOT to make to Linville Springs Road. I think this is a terrible name that it was, this proposed road was named the same thing as the existing road because it caused some confusion at Planning Board. So if you're looking at the map, the faint yellow dashed line is the thought that we might need a new road that would run parallel from Pine Grove to Dobson Street, running parallel to Linville Springs Road. We don't think there's a need for that. And if this rezoning were to be approved, then it would be irrelevant because the neighborhood would not continue to Pine Grove. It would not connect to Pine Grove, and it would not connect to the existing farm behind it to the west. So this is fully separate from the Linville Springs Road that you all drive on, you know, once a week or daily. And we do still want to see the improvements to that Linville Springs Road that DOT is proposing to do as part of the Macy Grove Road full extension going all the way to Perry and so on and beyond. So that was something that came up at Planning Board, and I wanted to make sure that we were all clear on that our proposal to remove this proposed Linville Springs expansion has nothing to do with any updates to Linville Springs Road that we're all anxiously awaiting. We think that there's no need for this, like I said, because if the site plan were to be adopted, part of it would be constructed. It would be the Wooddale Drive extension. And then the rest of it would not be necessary because of the subdivision's design would not connect to any other roads. So there would be no need for another through road. This was heard at the July Planning Board meeting, and staff and Planning Board recommended approval of the land use plan by changing a portion of this parcel as applicable to Case K-759-A2 from Commercial Neighborhood to Medium Density Residential, and to amend the Thoroughfare and Street Plan by eliminating the applicable portion of the proposed Linville Springs Extension from a portion of PIN 6887-30-4639 as applicable to this case as well. This was the vote at Planning Board in July on the development plan amendment. So all members who were present voted in favor. Are there any questions about this? I know the road piece is a little tricky with the size of the map. As far as the rezoning goes, K-759-A2, the petitioner is Amanda Hodiern, who's the agent for the owner, the owner being Combs Incorporated. The proposed zoning is from General Office Special to Residential Single Family, 7,000-square-foot minimum lot size, and that is a conditional zoning request. So there is a site plan that's associated with this request. The proposed use is residential building, single-family. Forty-seven units, units per acre would be 2.63. Surrounding zoning in the area is residential single-family, 12,000-square-foot minimum lot size to the north, which is adjacent, and across Linville Springs Road. To the east is Limited Business Special and General Office Special. And to the south and west is also residential, single-family, 12,000-square-foot minimum lot size. Our ordinance defines residential building, single-family, as a residential building which contains one dwelling unit and which occupies its own zoning lot. So this is one house on one lot. This site with, you can note with the point A2, has a little bit of a zoning history. In October of 2018, the Board approved a rezoning from RS-12 to General Office Special for use as an office and providing a number of related services for the community such as childcare, vocational training, and health services. The site plan expired when it wasn't developed. In February 2024, there was another rezoning, the K-759.A1. That was denied by the Board of Aldermen, seeking to rezone from General Office Special to Residential Multifamily, eight units per acre, and that was also a conditional request. That site plan proposed 97 townhouse units, parking areas, and a common mail area. So the number of units has been reduced and the zoning designation has changed. So the site plan proposed with this rezoning would become the plan for development if it's approved. The site plan shows only 47 units, and as I've said, that's 2.63 units per acre. The previous rezoning request was for six units per acre, so this decreases that by more than half. The access is provided off of Linville Springs Road and proposes to complete the north-south portion of the proposed Linville Springs Extension from the Thoroughfare and Street Plan. That's the extension of Wooddale Drive. They are also proposing a sidewalk along Linville Springs Road connecting to the existing sidewalk at the convenience store on the corner, and a 20-foot street yard along Linville Springs Road as well, which serves as a buffer between the street and the development. They are proposing two wet ponds and one bio cell to regulate stormwater. The detailed design comes at the Civil Construction Plans, but we've confirmed that they are accounting for that and have designated land area for that when we get into the detailed construction plans. The site is also located in the Highway Corridor Overlay District, so they're providing the sidewalk, they're providing the street yard, and it would regulate some on-property signage. The applicant is also requesting to modify the Neighborhood Scale Overlay District, which is like the Highway Corridor Overlay District. The purpose of this district is to enhance the The purpose of this district is to enhance the overall image of residential areas and neighborhood commercial centers by establishing commercial building and site design standards. It also encourages neighborhood scale commercial developments to complement the surrounding residential areas, and tries to implement the goals, policies, and objectives and recommendations of the Kernersville Development Plan. We support the request to remove this overlay district, because it does have prohibitions on residential uses within the district. So it would need to be removed in order to permit this request. But its goal, the neighborhood scale overlay district's goal, is to provide for compatible commercial development adjacent to residential development. And since this is proposed residential development, it's really irrelevant anyways. This is the site plan, so you can see the access coming off of Linnville Springs Road across from Wooddale Drive. DOT has reviewed this, and it's going to require left turn lanes. And then they are proposing ultimately three cul-de-sacs coming across the gas line and running parallel to the property line with Kernersville Middle School. When this previously came through, traffic was a hot topic of discussion. The ITE Trip Generation Manual classifies this use as residential detached dwelling, which is consistent with our zoning ordinance. The ITE Trip Generation Manual says that residential detached dwellings have about nine point four four trips per dwelling per day. So that's a total of four hundred and forty-three point sixty-eight trips per day over a twenty-four-hour period. And so then they further break it down to a ratio based on, you know, how many trips in the morning's highest hour and how many trips in the evening's highest hour. It would be thirty-two point nine additional trips in the morning and forty-seven trips in the evening on those highest hours of busy traffic. The North Carolina Department of Transportation does an average annual daily trip traffic count for Linnville Springs Road. That's held steady at around three thousand one hundred trips per day since 2023. The highest traffic count on Linnville Springs Road was in 2005, actually, at four thousand one hundred trips per day. NC DOT, as I mentioned, is requiring the construction of dedicated left turn lanes to facilitate ingress and egress to both sides of Wooddale. So somebody trying to either enter Spring Lake Estates or somebody trying to enter this development would pull into the left lane so that traffic going past could continue to flow. The land use plan, as we've discussed, is currently commercial neighborhood scale. And with the proposed development going to residential and at two point six three units per acre, staff is proposing the medium density residential land use plan designation. Staff's analysis is that growth in Kernersville and Forsyth County has changed the demand for housing. We've got more job centers, and we have the added benefit of being in close proximity to the interstate means that there's just a lot of demand for housing to go along with those jobs and other jobs in the area. The change in population has changed the demand for housing and what types of housing people are looking for. The proposed site plan requires the construction of dedicated turn lanes on Linnville Springs Road to help increase efficiency by allowing through traffic to continue to flow. And the number of dwellings, proposed density, and subsequent amount of increased traffic is less than what was proposed in the previous rezoning. This was heard at the July Planning Board meeting as well. Staff and planning board both recommended to approve the amendment to the unified development ordinance of the town by removing the neighborhood scale commercial overlay district and rezoning the property in case K seven five nine A two from general office special to residential, single-family conditional, seven thousand square foot minimum lot size, also conditional. Finding that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is both reasonable and in the public interest because of the following. The required road improvements will help address traffic issues along Linnville Springs Road through the use of dedicated turn lanes, which will clear the travel lanes. The proposed development will help increase the variety and availability of single-family homes within Kernersville, and the proposal is consistent with the land use plan if amended. Planning board and staff also recommend approval of the site plan and subject to the conditions as presented in the staff report. Now, at Planning Board, based on comments from adjacent property owners, Planning Board added, recommended adding one additional condition. They've requested, or made the recommendation that the board consider the following condition, that a ten-foot strip of existing vegetation shall be preserved and placed within an access and maintenance easement along the shared boundary between PIN six eight eight seven dash ten dash nine six six eight and lots thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and the homeowner association and stormwater control measure lot located to the north of lot forty-one as proposed. The Piedmont Natural Gas easement area would be exempt, because they control what can be planted and what can be put in their easements. The buffer shall be perpetually maintained, and any dead or diseased vegetation shall be replaced with like vegetation as necessary. So there was concern by the immediate adjacent property owner about the potential for trespassing into her agricultural field, and so Planning Board wanted to add this condition to help provide a buffer, a visual buffer, but also deterrent for folks who might want to wander around. The vote is as follows for the Planning Board hearing in July, with all members present voting in favor. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I've got one. Now, to say we were to approve this, can you come back later and change the density?
Not without going through a new rezoning, because you would be adopting the site plan with it. And further, state law prohibits us doing minor modifications that would change the density either positively or negatively. So it says, you can do minor modifications so long as there is no change in density, period. So if the density were to change, it would have to come back through this process.
Come back through the Board of Aldermen, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Catherine.
Catherine, I have one question. I believe this one, as opposed to the earlier action by the board that we declined, this one has about fifty units less than the one before. Is that about, did I recall reading that?
It's either like forty-nine or fifty. So this one is proposing forty-seven, and the other one was in the high nineties, so it's very close to fifty units less.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Garner, I have one question for you. You stated that there was a very high increase of traffic during 2005. If you go back to that, I wasn't here in 2005, like forty-one hundred trips per day. I was living in Kernersville at that time. So were there any record of increased traffic problems, accidents, or anything that you know, or did DOT give any reason for such an increase during that time?
We didn't ask DOT to justify their numbers, so they published this data. Anybody can search the internet for it. If you just search NC DOT average annual daily trip count, then you can access, it's a GIS portal, and it shows all the points where they've collected data, and then it just has a list of all the data points. So we just looked at the list and noted that the highest number was in 2005, and then in 2023 it had decreased by about a thousand.
I have a question about that. Mr. Swisher, Mr. Maltba, in 2005, is that, was there any road construction that you all can think of? Because I know at one point in time, the roundabout was built, and, but I thought it might be later than that. I'm not sure of the year that was built. The roundabout at Bowdenhammer, because maybe people diverted to go that way instead of going through the closed areas of the roundabout.
I don't think it was roundabout. I think you're correct. I think the roundabout was later, but I think there was work being done on Dobson Street around oh-five to maybe oh-seven. I think they did some road widening, some road resurfacing, and also I think they did some of the intersection work there as well at Old Valley School Road. So that may have detoured some of them up Linnville Springs to come around and back down to Dobson Street. But I don't think it was the roundabout. I think the roundabout was probably in 2010 or 11. Does that sound right, Dawn? Yeah, but I think there was some roadwork in that area that was detouring traffic up Linnville Springs at the time.
I guess we don't know an answer, but that's a good question, the why. Did you have any more questions, JR?
No, Madam Mayor.
Were there any other questions?
I've got another question. Kernar Road, Dobson Street area, and Old Valley School Road, they've changed that. It looks a lot better, and everybody thinks it works better. Is there any plan right now that you know of, Catherine, where they're gonna maybe put some traffic control device there? Because it's, that is a horrible place to
Sure.
Pull off Old Valley School Road onto Dobson Street. That's a challenge right there.
Right.
With the speed now.
I'm not aware of anything immediately, but I know once they get, once NC DOT gets Macy Grove Road open from Main Street to Piney Grove, I'm sure the pressure to do something about that Linnville from Piney Grove down Linnville Springs to Kernar Road is going to become that much more pressure on DOT to do something about that. But I don't know if they have that on their work program with dates at this time.
And it'll be up to DOT to do that and after town.
Both Linnville Springs, Piney Grove, and Kernar Road, Dobson are NC DOT streets.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Barrow, so you know, the mayor and I, Catherine, we have met at length with DOT, especially the mayor and I, we've met with them probably three or four times about that very, very intersection you're talking about. Because as Ms. Garner mentioned, once, you know, once Macy Grove Road is open all the way up and you can turn left, go up Linnville Springs and go all the way across, basically the Salem Parkway, the increase in traffic is likely to be there either way. So we've talked to them about doing a signal, roundabout, something at the intersection of Linnville Springs and Kernar Road, just for the new road. You know, the immediate impact probably won't be that great, but I think over time you'll see it fluctuate. I don't think it'll be a high increase every day, but I think you'll see it fluctuate as folks start using that a little bit more. But with that, I think if they do something that, that intersection, they've looked at coming back and picking up the one at Old Valley School Road as well.
You know, I've never been a big fan of the roundy rounds, but that one, that one's on Bowdenhammer and Dobson Street has to be the best one in the country.
They move the traffic when you figure them out.
Yeah, that's just, it's not a problem. And I lived over there for a long time, and that just was really good. I liked that. Maybe we could do something.
And DOT, DOT will study it, they, you know, DOT is more of a kind of a reactive than a proactive organization. So it'll take a while. They'll look at the traffic pattern and see if there is an increase. You know, obviously, at forty-one hundred at some point was its high peak. It's now at thirty-one hundred, so it's designed to handle more cars than what it's currently handling, probably a lot more cars than what it's currently handling. So they will study that once that, once the road is extended across, to see what the traffic situation is and whether improvements need to be made. But I don't, I wouldn't anticipate anything being done soon. Soon for DOT is probably five years in their book, maybe longer, but, you know, it's hard to tell, but they will look at it. And if it, I mean, if it is an issue, then they'll certainly get it on their, on their TIP, but Alderman Apple serves on the TAC for the town as well. So if it's something that comes in, and there's a big need there, then we can certainly maybe get it on TAC.
Right, I think that how in the traffic is as important as the rezoning.
Yeah.
And Kernersville right now, the traffic people holler about all the time. And I just want to be aware of that. Thank you.
You raised a really good point, though, that Old Valley is not that far from the Linnville Springs. So they ought to be studied together.
Yeah, they're very close there, yeah. Speed limit's what, about fifty through there, forty-five or fifty?
I think it's fifty, once you get to Old Valley School Road and go out further out, the Kernar Road, and I think Linnville Springs is thirty-five and forty-five.
Changes, yeah.
I believe that's right.
I think we could reduce the speed limit on Dobson Street, Kernar Road would be a good thing. That'd be easy thing to do, wouldn't it?
From Dobson Street out?
Yep.
Kern, that's not in our jurisdiction.
Well, I mean, we could harass those people, it's the DOT, and it's just a sign.
Yeah, they're used to harassment, so they may not respond quickly, but
And that's just a bit easy thing to make.
You could certainly ask them.
Just put up a few signs, we'll be quiet.
Yeah, that would be, that one would be up to them and would not be one that this board would be able to concur with, but we could certainly ask them once it, once it becomes an issue, and already is an issue in some place.
Good deal, thank you.
But you certainly could ask them on Linnville Springs, because that one is in the board's jurisdiction.
Right, thank you.
Could we ask Alderman Barrow to represent this board against DOT harassing them to get that done?
All right, any more questions about the presentation by Ms. Garner? Make sure. Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of the board. It's nice to see all of you again. My name is Amanda Hodiern. My offices are at eight oh four Green Valley Road, Suite 200 in Greensboro. I'm here tonight as attorney and representative of the landowner and applicant, which is Combs, Inc. So I have with me here this evening Mr. Kevin Combs, who is the principal of Combs, Inc. And we also have with us tonight our civil design professional engineer, Mr. Dalton Ward, who, as you've heard from Ms. Garner, this is a site plan specific zoning. So it has some technical aspects that have been presented to you that you may have questions about, so he is here at your disposal for any questions regarding site plans. All right, so quickly, just want to lift up a few things that were highlighted by Ms. Garner and go over some specifics here. The extent of our request, the acreage covered is seventeen point nine acres. I would submit to you that this is, traditionally speaking, a downzoning. It's currently zoned for non-residential office use. We want to downzone it back to a residential, a residential use. Specifically, we want to go from that GO, general office, special to a RS seven conditional, that's residential, seven thousand square foot lots, as you heard from Ms. Garner, with the conditional site plan attached. That does mean, as you talked about, Mr. Barrow, that this is a site plan specific zoning. So that site plan that's been submitted, it's gone through your development review committee process, it's in front of you tonight, is a specific commitment to you all, to your town staff, to the community, that what you see is what you get, and if it does need to change, as has been emphasized to you, it would have to come back through for anything that substantially changes or alters any of the required elements of the plan. Notably, the site plan does limit the maximum yield or maximum number of homes to forty-seven. As has been mentioned, this is exactly fifty homes less than what was considered by you last year. That was, I believe, a ninety-seven home request before. Also, the format is different. That was a townhome attached type of home that was requested before. This is a single-family detached, as Ms. Garner highlighted in her presentation. So one home, separate lots, single family. As you've also heard from staff, there is an associated land use plan amendment to take this out of the neighborhood commercial scale overlay, back to a residential designation of medium density residential. And as you've heard already from your staff, that's because commercial overlays or a commercial designation wouldn't apply anymore. As I just said, with the general office, that's commercial, that's why you needed that designation to make sure a commercial use was compatible in a residential area. Of course, now we want to go to residential, so we need to be in a residential land use plan designation. With the medium density residential, we'll look at this more in a moment, I would submit to you that that does provide a necessary and a very planning, a highly regarded planning tool to give a necessary transition and step down of land use format as it relates to other land uses in the area. This has been talked about before by me and Ms. Garner. We did want to be careful, and we were very intentional, Mr. Combs, and working with staff, to come back with a request before you tonight that was responsive and acknowledged the history here. So we were careful to review the minutes, talk with staff, talk with Mr. Swisher and Ms. Garner. We heard about it at our community meeting, you know, what was raised and what the big concerns were with the previous plan. So we hope that you'll agree, and that's why we are being intentional to highlight the ways that we are markedly different from that previous request in the ways that we heard and read about in those minutes. Less density, single-family, trip generation, traffic congestion. Less density, single family, trip generation, traffic congestion, staying off of Piney Grove Road, making sure we are attentive to the way that stormwater was managed. And of course, as you've already heard about, making sure that we've got a specific condition as it related to our agricultural neighbor on the west side, which we'll look at more in a moment. I did also want to note, your highway corridor overlay district is, is in place on this property and that there's no change requested to that. So it will remain. As you all know, I've talked about this here before you before, that's a great baked in element of your development ordinance that already sets high standards, high development requirements anywhere that it applies. So, but for that overlay, we might have a lot more conditions or necessary elements to put on this site plan to give things, to protect that street yard and to make sure that there's a sidewalk. But because the highway corridor overlay is here, we're not asking to change it. We will, we will abide and your site plan does have those commitments to ensure that we're meeting the requirements of that overlay. The subject property here, just a high level overview. The red star indicates where the subject property is. This is just an aerial image, just showing that you've got your Kerner'sville Middle School to the south, you've got residential to the north across the road, agricultural property that we've talked about to the west, the Shell Station on the corner there at Piney Grove and Linville Springs. And then of course, the Macy Grove extension, you can start to see, if your eyes are really good, you can start to see that improvement there at the intersection. So just to orient everyone. This is that same orientation, but here we have the parcel lines. So you can see exactly where the subject property is there and where it, the extent of it with those red lines. This is our existing zoning pattern. You can see that the bright blue, as it's showing up, indicates that current zoning of general office. It sort of stands out a bit in a sea of residential zoning. But of course, as you look across Piney Grove Road, we do have, and next door, excuse me, to the northeast, we've got some limited business. That's that convenience store with fuel pumps. We've got all kinds of varying densities of residential to the south, even though it's a residential zoning district, of course, we do have that institutional use of, of the school. So that's the zoning patchwork that, again, we're looking to return to, to a residential use. The land use plan, I mentioned this, you heard about it from Ms. Garner. Again, you see the white star over that maroon or, or brick red designation that currently denotes a land use category that was captured for the, for the previous, previous intended use for the Shepherd Center Office and Training Institutional Facility that they envisioned here. With, with the request to go back to residential land use here, of course, that, that category in your land use plan doesn't fit anymore. So we do want to go to a residential category, the medium density residential. It's that light pink or mauve blush color that you see in other areas. And I'll point out that you see it next door to mixed residential or commercial areas in other places. So if you imagine that mauve color dropped in under the white star, it will create that same transitional land use pattern that you see in other places where you step down from non-residential uses and higher density residential uses and transition back down to the yellow lower density, single, uh, single family residential format. So while this is single family, that medium density designation creates that transitional pattern that you're utilizing elsewhere in the town. This is the zoning site plan. Again, it is a site specific zoning request. So this is, this is the manifestation of the zoning that we're asking for. So you can see here a couple of the elements we've talked about. Single family, you see the, the separate lots. There's 47 of them here, as you've heard about. You see the single point of access coming off of Linville Springs. It's the extension of Wooddale Drive, as you've heard. You see the three separate stormwater management devices. You see the exclusion of that approximately 1.79 acres that abuts up to Piney Grove Road. It's just south of the Shell Station. That, that ensures and offers reliability that that area will never be accessed into the subdivision and create additional congestion and conflict with the school traffic, which I know was a concern last, last year when you heard the previous request. Couple other features, there is the, the gas easement that you've heard about already tonight. So this, this site plan does take that into account, of course. And then one of the required conditions and that we've talked a lot about with staff, of course, is getting the required approvals necessary to be able to cross the gasses with the road as you see it. So that, that's something that will, will be worked through as part of the process. Neighborhood communication, just to highlight this process, we had a neighborhood meeting in person back in March, held here in town, mailed out, so, all the letters according to the notification radius prescribed by the town. We had about 13 attendees at the meeting. We had a good discussion. We were there for a couple hours. Heard, as I mentioned earlier, we heard and discussed the previous proposal, the differences with this proposal. We talked a lot about traffic. We talked a lot about housing type and, and what, what this plan would offer to the area and continue to build the thriving and, and desirable residential node of Kerner'sville that already exists here and add 47 new homes to that fabric that continue to be at a level commensurate with, with the expectations and the enjoyment that current owners and residents have here in Kerner'sville. We also heard additional feedback and dialogue at planning board last month that resulted in that additional condition that Ms. Garner described to you. I will add a slight caveat for your consideration. If we go back to the site plan, as you see there on the western property line, you've got lots 39, 40 and 41 that are south of the gassesment. And I do want to highlight that while, while we've committed to a 10-foot vegetative buffer there, we may have to replant some of it. So in other words, when those three lots are getting graded and prepared and compacted to be a home site, if, if we lose any of the 10 feet of that vegetation or if the existing vegetation there isn't enough to be a, a, a physical separation and a visual separation, I do want to be clear and transparent that we would augment that planting with new plantings and new vegetation there to create, to deliver on the intent and the spirit of that commitment. North of the gassesment, as you can see, the only thing happening up there, that'll be HOA owned property. The only thing there is a stormwater device that's further to the east. So on the west side, we've got a lot of good existing vegetation that we won't need to touch or grade anywhere near. So we are very comfortable that that can be a full tree preservation area that shouldn't need to be augmented. If we have a dead or diseased tree, as you've heard, it will have to be replaced, but we don't expect to have to replant it to achieve the, the buffer that is committed to in that condition. So I believe that's everything I wanted to cover. I'll reemphasize, we have Mr. Dalton Ward here to answer any engineering questions. As I've said, this is a site specific plan. It's got a lot of detail to it. It's been through the development review committee twice. And so we, we did want to make sure Dalton was available for any questions. Mr. Combs is here. We see a lot of our neighbors here that we've, we've talked to at our previous meetings. So we'll, we'll be happy to answer questions and provide any more clarity and, and context as we, as we proceed through the discussion tonight. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there anyone else here interested in speaking in favor? All right, seeing no one is there, let's see, we've got three folks signed up to speak in opposition, Lisa Voss, Scott Mercer and Sarah. So we'll, uh, we'll run the time down, but we'll call time when it, uh, to allow the next person to speak if you overstep your third at that time. So it'll be approximately seven minutes. Lisa, are you ready? If you could introduce your name and your address for the clerk, please.
Madam Mayor and Alderman, my name is Lisa Swain Voss and I'm representing my mom, Rebecca Muston Swain, who lives at 670 Dobson Street. My mom is the last surviving Muston of the Muston and Crutchfield Grocery Store. So obviously we've lived here a long time, Mom, and we certainly take pride in Kerner'sville. But what I'm here tonight for is that our farm is the, the farm you're hearing about on the west side that connects to this property. We have about nine to 10 acres of hayfields. We're cutting them about twice a year. It's producing about 29, 29,000 pounds of hay each cutting. These fields are beautiful. And again, as we've heard, our concern is that our fields could possibly be used for recreation for the folks in this proposed development. We know it would be enticing, you know, to walk your dogs, play your sports, soccer, ride your four wheelers. If this activity would happen on our fields, it would destroy the hayfields. We did hear, as you've heard, that the planning board did offer us a border or a buffer along the property line of the proposed development. However, with the gas line of the 60 plus, 60 plus feet joining the properties, we're not sure that the buffer will solve our problem because the gas line really cannot be blocked and it runs right beside our fields. So that's our concern and we would appreciate any consideration you have in this matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Next time, Scott Mercer.
Thank you, madam board, pleasure tonight. I'm not opposed to Kevin's development if he's retaining the water that he says he's going to. My opposition to this is who's controlling the DOT and the runoff that's coming and the expansion of Linville Springs? Now, if DOT owns Linville Springs and that Wooddale is a town street, who's controlling that runoff? Because the runoff comes down that path, across Pam's property, across Wooddale, into the creek, into the silt pond and into Walker Pond. And where do you think that water ends up? My yard. So, and as it is, five years ago, the town repaved Aquaview. They raised the road two plus inches and my wife and I, who've lived there 23 years, have been fighting water in my yard. This is a picture of what my yard looked like three weeks ago tonight. And I risk water in the basement constantly. From the road, I got no ditch and I've already spent a bunch of money trying to resolve this. So if you're going to extend Linville Springs and widen it, you got more impervious water flow. It's going to flood Pam's yard even more. Where's the water go? Now, we pay town taxes on Wooddale and we pay town taxes on Aquaview. But we got no control over Linville. It seems we got to get a grasp on that. Secondly, we initially talked about the speed limit. The speed limit starts at 50 miles an hour at her farm coming up Dobson. So at the intersection of Valley and Linville, it's 50 miles an hour. And yeah, you take your risk trying to get out of there. So, again, I appeal to the board, who's going to control the runoff? Because it's the policy of Kerner'sville, it's your problem if you own the property. Well, I didn't create the issue, but I have to resolve the issue? Again, the board needs to consider this. Thank you.
Scott, could you give your full name and your address for the clerk?
Nine, Scott Mercer, 952 Aquaview.
Thank you.
And if the board, please look at Walker Pond. For those of you who've lived in Kerner'sville a long time, you know that waterway. It is not a retention pond for water. It overflows and it goes in the Blues Creek ultimately. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sarah.
Hello, board, mayor. My name is Sarah Sabanis. I live at 104 McCoy Road, about a quarter of a mile from this proposed development. Going, following what Scott said about the water runoff, I do want to note that at the planning board meeting, the civil engineer, sorry, the civil engineer for Combs stated that the proposal will actually reduce stormwater. And Ms. Garner released a memo stating that, as described by the town engineer, which the town engineer said wet ponds have little to no runoff volume reduction. The town engineer said what is proposed will not reduce the stormwater runoff from the site. So even though there is, I believe, two wet ponds and one wet cell, I'm sorry, I can't find it on the page right now, but bio cell, excuse me. This is still going to have a negative impact on pretty much the flooding of Linville Springs Road. A few weeks ago, we got like three inches of rain in an hour and I had to go from, my father lives on Old Valley School Road and I live on McCoy, so I had to go down Linville Springs Road. I couldn't see, I thought I was going to lose control of my car because of how rapidly all of that water appeared. So that is one of my concerns that are echoed by those who live in the community as well. The other point that I want to make is the staff report states that the, the staff summary, which was talking about traffic for this, the opening of the Macy Grove Road extension is expected to help with the diversion of traffic off of Piney Grove Road and Linville Springs Road by offering alternative options and routes. Well, in November of 2023, Mr. Swisher over here, he proposed the request of funding a feasibility study for the extension of Linville Springs Road, explaining that it is a very congested area. And as part of the resolution, which was unanimously voted upon by this Board of Aldermen, the resolution states, Linville Springs Road is not currently designed to handle the increase in traffic associated with U6003, which is that Macy Grove Road extension. So in 2023, you all acknowledged that Linville Springs is a problem when it comes to traffic and this study has not been done. I don't believe we got the funding by the state legislature. Please correct me if I'm wrong. But this is a known issue. There are discrepancies between the staff summary that was, that was submitted for this and what the Board of Aldermen agreed upon in 2023. So I'm not against development in our town. I love it here. I've lived in Kerner'sville for five years now. I came here to raise my family. I have a five-year-old and an almost two-year-old. And I want more people to be able to come here, but this is high density residential. And this used to be zoned for RS12 prior to the Shepherd Center acquisition of the land. I want to know why we can't go back to that. That would, or even RS9, which is the in-between of RS7 and RS12. We're putting a lot more cars on the road. We already acknowledge that we don't have the infrastructure. Please, I urge you to vote against this or at least come back with a different, for Mr. Combs to come back with a different proposal that is less dense and also find out how to help Pam and Scott and everybody with the water issues. Thank you.
Thank you. There's some more time for comments. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Saying that, I'd like to ask if the petitioner has a rebuttal. Your maximum time would be five minutes, please, limited to answering concerns or questions or topics raised by the opponents.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Regardless, and thank you to everyone who came out and commented. We appreciate this dialogue. For our neighbor to the west, Lisa Voss, speaking for her mother and her family, she's correct, of course. We, we, we cannot make commitments to, to do things that the gas, the gas company ultimately is, is the decider of. However, what I'll highlight is that's an existing condition. So to the extent that that gassesment is inviting anyone to traverse that corridor, that's not being changed by this proposal. And so I think what, what we're being asked to look at here is what is an appropriate balancing of two property owners, you know, trying to, trying to utilize their property in a reasonable way. And so by decreasing the intensity of the use here by over half, taking down the number of residents that we're putting here, taking down that risk of folks by changing the format to a house that where people have a backyard and have room, a private room where they can roam and explore as opposed to people in a townhome who might have more need to explore outside of their own yard. Those are ways that we've tried to balance those, those neighboring property uses in a responsive way to this concern, but still allow a reasonable use of this property owned, owned by Combs, Inc. Regarding Mr. Mercer's comments, I'll just lift up that everything he's describing is a. an existing condition. And he correctly noted that these are conditions that are arising from the impervious surface and the profile of Linville Springs Road, which is already there. So that this development, of course, is tasked with and must and will manage and meet the regulations for stormwater runoff on its site, but it, you know, it's not gonna go back and change the, the profile and whatever's coming off of Linville Springs Road. However, when that road, when that corridor is improved, as we've been talking all around tonight, which is on, on the NC DOT plans, it will, of course, get a curb and gutter. And so that, that should assist with that. But as the NC DOT is in the throes of that feasibility planning right now for that section, that's the time and that's the mechanism during which those concerns should be raised because he's exactly right. That relates to the road, not to this development. So, and then speaking to Ms. Semenous, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, Sabanas, thank you, comments, I do wanna reserve some time for Mr. Ward to address, and we appreciate the diligence of staff. We do wanna be very clear about stormwater management. But I also want to point out, again, she, she talked about Linville Springs Road traffic can't handle, or excuse me, the current road alignment can't handle the new traffic that's gonna be coming off the Macy Grove Road extension. Well, that's exactly why there's a project plan to widen and improve Linville Springs Road in this area. Again, it's being studied right now. We did have to dialogue with, and staff did as well, with NC DOT to make sure that our, our plans and our profiles and those left turn lanes were compatible with what they're seeing in their studies and what they've got on paper currently for that improvement. So all of that dovetails, and all of those improvements to handle those changes can come along together. She mentioned that this is high-density residential. It's not. It's 2.63 units per acre, which by any definition is not high-density residential. It is 7,000 square foot lots, but that does not dictate the maximum density that the math would yield. In other words, if you take 17.9 acres and divide that up at 7,000 square foot lots, that gives you 111 home sites. We're asking for 47. So we need to be careful not to conflate density with massing and feasibility layouts. So the density here is 2.63. That is low density, and that is, that is what yields the number of people, the number of trips, and the types of impacts that we think of flowing from density. So we wanna be careful how we, how we categorize that. And I wanna give Dalton 45 seconds, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Dalton Ward.
You have 44 seconds.
Yes, sir. 902 Cross Creek Road. So I do wanna apologize if the staff is correct, I misspoke during the planning board meeting. What I said was that we would reduce flows for the worst storm that would happen in one year without getting too technical. What I meant was, on average, the worst storm that would happen once a year is the storm that we will be containing and treating. So that is minimum stormwater quality standards. That's per-state requirements. And every storm that, on average, is less than that will also be contained. So the wet pond will meet those requirements as well as the bio cells. So I'm out of time, but if there are further questions, I'd be happy to answer them for the board. Thank you.
I have more questions for this man.
Hang on a minute, we gotta finish the, we gotta let the resident speak again, then we, so write down all your questions. You'll be back for questions. All right. On the other side of the issue, the residents who spoke, there's five minutes if you have a counter rebuttal to any of the comments that Ms. Hoderyn or Mr. Ward made in the rebuttal. So if you'd like, we can set the clock at five minutes. Any of the folks who spoke can come back, maximum altogether time, five minutes. So, so Sarah's coming back, Sarah Sabanas, anybody else planning too? Okay, looks like you got the five minutes, Sarah.
I hope I don't speak for nine, or five minutes. I do wanna note also that one of the conditions for their use then, when we talk about the road improvements, speaking on the feasibility of what DOT is looking at right now and everything, it does say all required improvements to Linville Springs Road shall be completed prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy in the first house. I know that that's in reference to those turn lanes, which, yes, turn lanes are great. We do need them there even now without this development. But if you're also talking about the things that DOT is trying to see if they're feasible, well, does that mean that now we would have to wait until those, those feasibility studies are done for unfunded, unapproved projects? I think it's all great thinking that Linville Springs Road will eventually be better because DOT deems it, if they do, but I don't really wanna hold out hope for DOT doing anything in a timely manner.
Okay, is there anyone else? You can come forward. This is Scott, keep this is Scott returning.
Just a little history on Linville Springs Roads. If we all remember back, they put two-foot on each side of that road about 20 years ago. They expanded that road out, which, again, hasn't helped anything other than you got more of a curbing there. But I'm not aware of any curbing that's gonna go in when they extend those lanes. And if you look now with the project that they're doing on the extension of Macy Grove Road, they paid part of it, and now they're in there tearing it up and putting drainage Go figure. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'll hold off on closing the public hearing for questions unless, Mr. Powell? Go ahead and close it with all the comments. Okay, there's been kinda two different views on that, so I just wanted to make sure for the purposes of this. So, okay, to close the public hearing, and then we'll have questions and deliberations outside of that. All right, the public hearing is closed. All right, there's a lot to do here. Ms. Garner, let me start with you. The question Ms. Sabanas had about the timeframes for the roads and the approval, and the question about Mr. Mercer had about the curbing on the lanes, if you could address those two points?
Sure.
And anything else that was brought up that...
Yes, ma'am. To Ms. Sabanas's question about not wanting to wait for NC DOT, and would we be expecting the applicant to improve Linville Springs to the full extent that we will be expecting NC DOT to do? No. The condition that she referenced is a condition applicable to the site plan that the applicant has submitted. So we would be looking for the applicant to complete any widening in turn lanes prior to issuing the first certificate of occupancy. This is a condition that we have modified to front-load the requirement because we have had many developments in the past few years where the homes all get built and people are living in them, and the required road improvements are not done, and then everybody is suffering. So we said, okay, we need to front-load this requirement so that way the requirements from NC DOT that will help mitigate the traffic need to be done prior to the increase in traffic so much as it's within our control and the developers' control. So also, there's a prohibition on off-site improvements, and I would imagine that if we were to say, well, we'd like you to also fully widen Linville Springs Road, Ms. Hoderyn would have a lot to say about off-site improvements for us requiring her developer, her client, to fix all of Linville Springs Road, as much as that might solve a lot of problems. To Mr. Mercer's statement about will there be curb and gutter, there was a lot of discussion about curb and gutter, and I believe it was removed from the widening plans for the Linville Springs portion. I know Mr. Barrow has questions for, for Dalton, so he can confirm that also in his testimony. Within the residential subdivision streets that they would be constructing within the development, it would have curb and gutter per the cross-section that's shown on their site plans. So that would meet the town's requirements for a residential subdivision street to be constructed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Swisher, do you have any information about the NC DOT plans and the stormwater issues that were raised from the town?
No, I don't have anything regarding NC DOT plans. I will say, I think Mr. Mercer brought it up, and Dalton addressed it some with the water runoff. As Ms. Hoderyn said, that is there now, coming off the road. Mr. Mercer, he's correct, about 20 years ago, it was lined a couple of feet, so that runoff is, is there. That's DOT's runoff to control. Mr. Combs will, will obviously have the wet ponds to control the runoff on his property, which there currently is no control of the runoff from that property. Yes, it has vegetation on it, but still, there's no runoff there to control. It will be controlled, but there is none on Linville Springs Road. One can only hope that in the future, if they do widen that road, that they do some, some control of that runoff at that point. But, you know, that's DOT who's to say what they'll do. I don't, I couldn't address that. But there are, we've not met with them regarding any plans to that detail yet. And I will say, as far as, and I'm gonna get, Ms. Garner, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Ms. Hoderyn addressed it, but Ms. Sabanas mentioned something about zoning it, you know, keeping it RS 12 is what it was before. I think it's probably important to point out RS 12 is about 3.6 lots per acre. Full build-out of 17 acres will be about 64 houses if he could build it out to that extent. He would be entitled to those 64 homes, because we have to take into consideration the full 17.9 acres, which would be more under RS 12 than what he's currently asking for under the RS 7. So be glad to answer any more questions, but as far as runoff, I would defer to the engineer on that one.
Okay. All right, Mr. Barrow, you have some questions. You can call whoever you'd like to, but they need to answer your question, not wander back to the main case.
I got you. The main question I have for the civil engineer, if he could...
Okay, Mr. Dalton, if you can come to the podium and make sure the microphone is on. I do have to compliment, you have used the best use of 45 minutes that I have ever seen in this room, so thank you. And you finished without going over, so...
I appreciate it.
Forty, oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke, 45 seconds, the countdown from 45. You had a couple seconds left, so...
Let's just get it done, let's just keep it clean.
Yeah, and Mr. Swisher has just noted that that's really good for an engineer, so we appreciate your conciseness, but feel free to fully answer Mr. Barrow's questions, but if you could stick to answering his question, that'd be great.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The question I have is, the way you've designed this and the ponds and all that stuff, it is not going to increase the runoff, is that correct?
So, again, without getting too technical, what we will be required to do is to reduce the peak flow coming out of that pond for a storm that is, on average, happened, happens once a year. So statistically, they'll look at precipitation values. This is all from the US government, from NOAA is the acronym. And so they publish these values. It was actually in the memorandum that the staff produced, a 2.77-inch storm over 24 hours. And again, without getting too technical, our watershed devices will reduce the peak flows to that level or below. It's the requirement that we will meet. In my experience, a lot of times, to completely treat water quality, we end up reducing and detaining quantity to an even greater extent, but the one-year, 24-hour storm is the limit that we are meeting.
So when that young lady was talking about all of the water that came up, the three inches of rain that got, your ponds that you designed and the runoff for this particular project, it would handle it, correct?
Again, it's so...
Again, let, let me be real plain about this.
Sure.
You can answer that yes or no. These people out here don't know anything about your engineering, but we do know when our backyard or our front yard's full of water.
Absolutely.
Okay, and my question is very simply, you, y'all's project, is it gonna make it worse on these people?
For large storms, it can make it worse, yes.
And a large storm would be, what, over three inches?
So it's a storm that, on average, happens less than once a year. So a storm that, on average, happens every other year, every 10 years, every 100 years.
Right. Well, I mean, on the, on the average, that's what I'm asking you. On the average, you, the government gives you all these numbers and stuff and ways to do it, but what you've done out there will handle the three inches, the three-inch storm in 24 hours, is that what you're telling us?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Simply, okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, a, as far as the road and all of that, we don't have control of that, correct?
As far as Linville Springs Road?
Correct.
That's correct, yeah. We are installing the left turn lanes that they're requiring, but other than that, we have no control. Those are the requirements from DOT.
Okay. And do y'all compute the runoff of that piece of property as it's just sitting there right now?
That's correct.
Do you know that, do you know what it is now?
Yes, sir.
You do?
Yes, sir.
And you're controlling all of that, correct?
That's correct.
Up to the three, I think you said three inches of rain?
Approximately.
In a 24-hour period. Okay, so that's all the questions I had. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So let me ask a question. Is the curb extending from the QM to, to Wooddale to support that sidewalk?
No, so the sidewalk will actually be on the back, excuse me, on the backside of the ditch.
Okay.
So it'll be between the roadside ditch and the houses.
Okay. All right, any other questions of Mr. Ward while he's... Thank you, you can sit down.
Thank you so much.
All right, questions of anybody else in the room? Or discussion? Chris, you got any questions for anyone? Bill, you got any questions? JR?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, do we have any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I just, I, I wanna recognize for Ms. Muston, or whatever your name was, Boss Muston or whatever, you're in the city, correct?
Ms. Swain.
Swain, is that her name, Swain? Y'all are in the city, correct? You're far, you're at nine acres.
Lisa, could you come forward? The farm is not in the city.
The farm is not? So when you have a problem, you have to call the sheriff, right?
Yes.
Okay, have y'all had any problems?
No, not to this time, no.
Okay, and there's a ton of people live right across the road, right?
Yeah, we've had no problems at this time.
We have an excellent police department here in Kernersville.
Yes.
And I think our jurisdiction will probably cover that farm too, if you had a problem. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Swisher, is that within the range the police can respond to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Answer is yes. Mr. Barrow, good question. All right, a lot of information here, a lot of, good work by the planning board also, and our staff, developer, residents, you have a lot of good comments. You've been here before with the other cases, so there's just been a lot of zoning history, approved and denied both on this property. So appreciate everybody's involvement in this, in raising all these issues for consideration. Is there any discussion by the board? Or do I have a motion?
I would, I would just like to echo what you just said.
Hold the microphone a little closer.
I'm sorry.
That's good.
I'd like to just echo what you just said. As this process was going on tonight, it occurred to me that the tenor or the tone and the content of the comments that were made, both for and against, I can't imagine it working any better. You know, those comments, what we hope to get out of these public hearings is information that will arm us to make a good decision for the citizens of the town. And you have certainly done hard work and excellent work to get those matters before us in that context. And I just wanna congratulate everybody, from Amanda to the three of you who spoke in opposition. They were not emotional presentations, they were laden with facts, and it really does help us when the process works as well as this one has tonight. So I compliment every one of you on the job you've done. So, I compliment every one of you on the job you've done. Madam Mayor, is this one that we can vote on tonight to approve? That having been said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendment to the UDO and the rezoning request as contained for K-759.82 and the staff and planning board recommendation with the conditions imposed thereby.
Do we need to vote on the development?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you'll also need to either approve or deny the development plan.
Catherine, could you put up the...
I'm waiting on this plan, I'm sorry.
So, we had the combined public hearing, it seems like a while ago. But the presentation, the first presentation was on the Kernersville Development Plan, zoning docket KDP. And that was removing the badly named proposed road, proposed Lenville Springs extension that ran between the school and the back of this property from Pine Grove through. And then the commercial neighborhood designation, which was applicable for the proposed senior center, but not really applicable, as Ms. Garner explained, to a residential area. So, we've got the KDP 75 recommendation to deal with first.
Please allow me to withdraw that motion as originally made.
Okay.
And I'll make the motion with regard to KDP 75, the Kernersville Development Plan recommendation, that we approve the recommendation of the staff and the planning board for that as set forth on the slide.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval. I've got a second, so a motion by Alderman Apple, second by Mayor Proton Thompson, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to the zoning docket K-759A2, which Mr. Apple already talked a little bit about. But we have the staff and planning board recommendation and then the additional condition recommended by the planning board as to the 10-foot strip of vegetation where it could be maintained. So, Ms. Garner, would that be maintained by the homeowners association later?
We are recommending that it be put in an access and maintenance easement for the homeowners association to be able to maintain it. And it helps distinguish to those who look at their plots that that needs to be maintained rather than as landscaping that they could potentially cut down.
Okay, and that would be the same homeowners association that would then continue to maintain the ponds and that sort of thing in the development?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Apple, if you want to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am, I'd withdraw the original motion on this one as well. But I'd like to then move that respect to K-759.82 with the staff and planning board recommendation that we approve the recommendation made by staff and planning board with the additional conditions imposed thereby.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Motion by Alderman Apple, second by Mayor Proton Thompson, all in favor? It's unanimous. And Ms. Swain and Ms. Voss, the community development department does enforce those maintenance of the landscaping. So, you've got the Kernersville Police Department for the trespassing and you've got Ms. Garner's office for the maintenance of that easement. So, and we do, as people who attend the meetings frequently, you've seen many times when that's been discussed and enforced by the town. So, thank you. All right, anything further on this? So, Mr. Combs, when do you plan to get started?
I guess I'll...
The answer was soon as possible, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, should we go on to speakers from the floor or do you want to take a break? All right, let's stand in recess. Let's say about 10 minutes.
Good evening and welcome back to the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. I'll call this meeting again to order. We are to speakers from the floor in our public session, and our first speaker is Matt Sin.
Good evening. My name is Matt Sin. My address is 631 Friartuck Road. I just want to spend a minute first on the vote last night regarding Woodson-Salem firefighters' benefits being reduced by the Woodson-Salem City Council. I'm totally opposed to their benefits being cut. As a conservative, I believe that public safety is one of the utmost important things and the duties of government. So they're already underpaid, police, firefighters, EMS, and to then cut their benefits when there's no public engagement, there's no negotiation, totally against it. I actually tried to speak to my councilman, and he wouldn't even discuss it with me for a possible tax increase that I'm sure all the citizens would have been in favor of. Quickly, what I want to speak about tonight is as we, as our students go back to school, there's this issue of public school meal debt. At the beginning of last school year, I committed to try to help the Forsyth County Schools, thinking that, you know, I could make some difference in a small issue. Well, it turned out to be a big issue. The public school meal debt for Forsyth County was $60,000 plus. I was only able to help about one-sixth of that. $10,000 might not be a lot of money for the Forsyth County School Board, but it's a lot of money for me. So I just want to say, families, if you have students in public schools and you can't afford to pay their meal debt, please pay it because it does affect other students in that the schools have to budget money and withhold money for the end of the year to pay it off. Second, if you or family cannot pay, there is government assistance. Please spend the short amount of time to apply for it. The government has guaranteed that there will be no further legal repercussions if you're worried about your immigration status. So please, let's pay attention to public school meal debt because kids can't learn when they're hungry, and the schools shouldn't pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the Board of Aldermen on an issue not included in tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item in our public session, which is consideration of a downtown event request and temporary street closure request by the Kernersville Arts and Crafts Guild.
Madam Mayor, Board, you have the downtown event application and the request from Kernersville Arts and Crafts Guild. The date of their event is August the 23rd from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and they are just asking to close the portion of Harmon Lane beside Harmon Park from Cherry Street to Main Street. We've done this in the past. This is probably, I don't know, maybe the eighth or 10th year of that. Never had any issues with the event. It's always been well-attended by folks in the community, so we are recommending approval of their request again this year.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
A motion by Mayor Pretam Thompson, seconded by Alderman Barrow, all in favor. It's unanimous. All right, item C is discussion and consideration of murals and public artwork. Shall we start with your presentation, Ms. Garner?
Mayor, Board of Aldermen, this presentation is an update on where we are based on the items that were discussed back in May. So similar to the memo that was posted online detailing kind of the research that we've done and the proposal that we are advertising for a hearing at Planning Board this month, I'm going to cover this kind of in four stages. So background, our research, what we're proposing, and then the next steps. So on May 28th, the Board of Aldermen asked staff to research what other communities in North Carolina do to regulate murals and any sponsored by signage in response to a request by a citizen. So May to July, staff has been researching other ordinances to find commonalities, differences, anything of interest, and just in general, how is public art regulated or not regulated? And so then this past month, we've been revising, writing, revising, and rewriting again to try to find a middle path. So the middle path is often the most difficult one to find. Our existing ordinance doesn't provide much in terms of guidance on public art, doesn't provide much in the terms of how to proceed in general for these types of questions. So then we said, okay, well, we need to add this then. We know there's a desire for sponsorship information. We know there is also a concern about the number of murals. We heard from citizens who felt that we had enough already and were kind of concerned about adding more. So we know that there are people on both sides of the aisle and some who are just in the middle going, yes, and. So we were trying to balance all of these competing interests. We know there's an interest in creating variety and excitement in the downtown because that drives visitation and people coming downtown, and it makes our downtown vibrant. And we also know that there's concerns about how we make sure that murals in any public art for that matter are maintained so that the art doesn't become something that blights our downtown or detracts from it. So we sort of identified all of these things into goals. So we wanted to understand how murals and other art in the public realm was regulated across North Carolina. We wanted to find a way to permit sponsorship signage. We wanted to create a spot for murals or art in the public realm that made original art wholly separate from signage. We agreed that original art is not signage. Sometimes it can be signage, but if it's a mural that is not related to the business on whose wall it's located, it is art. It is not a sign. And then we wanted to create a process for which art can be permitted based only on two factors. Is it a sign or is it art? And then where is it located on the property? So the research we conducted, we reviewed ordinances across North Carolina. We looked at Wilmington, Raleigh, Charlotte, Asheville, Rocky Mount, Sparta, Morrisville, Morrisville, Salisbury, Wendell, Indian Trail, Wilson, Apex, Holly Springs. I put this out on the planners' listserv to say, has anybody done this? Will anybody respond? We got a few responses, spoke to other planning staff in Monroe and Indian Trail and Roxborough and Morrisville. We did not choose to evaluate mural ordinances from other states because we could not easily quantify the differences in enabling statutes of their state. And so we just said, we'll focus on North Carolina. We have the same general statutes related to planning and zoning, and those are the most relevant things for us. So that's why we stuck to large and smaller communities only in North Carolina. We also made in-person visits, so I challenged all of my staff that as they traveled this summer to take a look for murals and send pictures. So we saw so many murals this summer across North Carolina, some local and some further afield, but we have, we have looked at a lot of murals. We found some similarities and we found some differences when we reviewed ordinances. All of the ordinances that we reviewed agree that murals are not signs unless they contain commercial copy, whether directly or indirectly. So the example that I used in the memo is that if Mike's Landscaping is the business, and he has a painted sign that says Mike's Mowing or Mike's Landscaping, then that's, that's, that's directly advertising for the business. If it doesn't have any words, but it's a picture of a lawnmower, it's indirectly related to the service that his business is providing, and we would still regulate that as a sign. Most ordinances also had size limitations and/or restriction on the number of walls that can be painted on a building. And many of them also had maintenance standards to keep the mural from becoming a nuisance. Some differences across the state were that some municipalities pay for the murals in their downtown through a public art program, which affected their regulations. We know that Sanford in particular does a program where the town and their downtown development program solicit donations through a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, the Friends of Downtown Sanford, and they put up the advertising, or not the advertising, but the sponsorship plaques because they've also paid for those murals. So they put out RFPs, seeking proposals. So they are, they are soliciting the donations, soliciting the requests for proposals, and then paying for those. So it really differed in the implementation based on whether the municipality was directly involved in the ordinance or the application of murals and downtown art through their ordinance. Some municipalities only allowed murals in their historic downtowns, which also required additional review either by a Historic Preservation Commission or a Downtown Development Commission. That adds an additional layer of regulation and additional steps to a process. And then some municipalities tried to regulate the wording on murals, only permitting inclusive and welcoming language such as "welcome to their town," which we thought was also kind of interesting in the specificity with which they were getting into the design. So as we get further into this, I do want to distinguish between some, some words that I think we toss out. I know I've been guilty of this. We toss out, but mean very different things in the context of this ordinance. So a painted sign, a historic or a ghost sign, and then murals, which we are going to propose to add to a category that's more inclusive called outdoor community art. So painted signs are currently allowed in our zoning ordinance. So our UDO definition of a sign is any sign for publicity which is visible from any public way directing attention to the individual, the business, the commodity, the service, like in the lawnmower in my landscaping example. Activity or product by means of words, lettering, parts of letters, figures, numerals, phrases, sentences, emblems, devices, designs, trademarks, or other pictorial matter designed to convey such information and displayed by means of paint, and so on and so forth. such information and displayed by means of paint, and so on and so forth. So we found also in our trek across the state, we found some examples of painted signs. So the one in the top left is called The Sweet Shop, and they have a painted cupcake on their building next to their sign. Then there's an advertisement for the Upper Coastal Plain Business Development Center, a bar called The Cardinal. Locally, we've got Fisher Fitness and Training that's painted on the side of the building. We've got Cake and All Things Yummy on the far right-hand side. We've got another sweet shop in Mount Airy in the bottom middle-left, and then Barnhart Jewelers in Salisbury, the bottom middle-right. These are different than historic or ghost signs. So these are typically signs that were painted 50-plus years ago, 50 being the threshold for National Register inclusivity. These often remain in a weathered state. Sometimes they are restored. Mooresville, North Carolina, just did a big project with the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources in Raleigh to restore their ghost signs. Salisbury's done the same of that, some of that too. So the photo on the left is from Wilson. You can see there are two. One is more faded than the other. The one in the center obviously being local, Penix Drugstore, and then the one on the right is from Salisbury. So there's the historic Coca-Cola mural, but then there's also the W.A. Roseman commodity shop sign up at the top. So those are ghost signs that remain locally and in other municipalities. So then why the term outdoor community art? So we found that the term public art is most commonly associated in ordinances with municipal programs that fund artwork in public spaces or regulate artwork in public spaces by a committee. So we've got Historic Resources Commissions that regulate historic resources per an ordinance. We found a lot of public art committees that regulate and sometimes fund public art through a public art committee. And I don't want to, by not using that language, I don't want to say that we don't find that important. We're getting a lot of comments in our comprehensive plan feedback and listening sessions that we think we should and in the future Kernersville should do more in this realm, but right now we don't have a public art commission and we also wouldn't want to rush the creation of one of those either. So we came up with the term outdoor community art because we wanted to encompass all types of artwork that can be placed in public or semi-public spaces regardless of who pays for it without limiting the concept of art to just painted art. We also wanted to include sculptures or decorative features like a fountain on private property or a sun dial or something that is intended to be like an art amenity, something that the community would benefit from its beauty. So we wanted to be inclusive in our terminology but distinguish outdoor community art from public art right now. So the definition that we came up with for outdoor community art based on some other definitions that we had seen in other ordinances is that outdoor community art would be statues, sculptures, murals, mosaics, fountains, or other similar features on public or private property so long as it is visible to the public and does not require the public to be a patron or resident of the development in which the art is located in order to view the art. So our proposal would involve updates to two articles of our Unified Development Ordinance, Article 5 and Article 11. Article 5 is development standards applicable to all uses, and Article 11 is definitions. So Section 5.1.1(c) prohibited signs. We've added language to very explicitly state that off-permiss wall signage is not permitted. We heard loud and clear that there was confusion about that, and so we want to make it 100% clear that this is not just an interpretation. This is not allowed. We've added sections, two sections in 5.1.2 under permitted signs. 5.1.2-h would be historic painted signs, which would add language to allow for maintenance to and replication of historic signs that existed at least 50 years prior to the adoption of the UDO, which was in 2024, with pictorial evidence. So I've heard that there may have been other historic painted signs that have weathered away, but there are photos that exist. So we want to give those business owners an opportunity to bring back those historic signs that may have once been on their building. 5.1.2 is a new section that would add commemorative signage for public amenities. So this adds language to allow for plaques denoting honorariums, memorials, or sponsorship of public amenities. So 5.1.2-r, this is probably the meat of the initial request. How do we honor and recognize those people who have generously donated towards good things in our community, whether it's art or it's a tree planted on public property or it's a bench on the sidewalk? So plaques denoting honorariums, memorials, or sponsorships on public amenities within or visible from the public right-of-way. Plaques must be flat and of a durable material such as paint, metal, or stone, and securely affixed to or adjacent to the public amenity. Plaques may not contain commercial logos, symbols, or images of any kind. Only text denoting the honorarium, memorial, or sponsorship may be included. Further, we've defined public amenities to include gazebos, benches, and other features within public parks or on the public sidewalk, permanent landscaped garden beds within or adjacent to the public right-of-way, and outdoor community art as described in Article 5, Section 5.9.4. And then further, it says that within or adjacent to the public right-of-way, a commemorative plaque can be no larger than one square foot, and within a public park or with outdoor community art, it can be no larger than three and a half square feet. So where did we come up with that number? In addition to canvassing the state for murals, we also canvassed downtown and measured every mural and every commemorative plaque that we could find. This ranged from signs at the Greenway to signs in Setan Park to signs on all of the trees out here. So we spent a lot of time measuring and documenting, and this map is available to the public. There's a link to it in the memo, and it can be found on our Community Development Mapping Hub. So anybody who's interested can zoom around and see. Once we had all of the signs located and documented by size, we then divvied them out by which ones might be landmark signs. So the Greenway Trail signs, you can see those. There's two little signs that kind of stick off of downtown. We categorized those as landmark signs because landmark signs in our ordinance have an existing definition. So we sort of divided into, in terms of what would meet our definition of a commemorative plaque and what meets a definition for something else. So this map is available on our website, but this is where we came up with those numbers. We went with the largest one that we had. So then the proposed change to 5.9.4 would add outdoor community art. So this is entirely new language, and it is in a section of Article 5 that's like other standards. So when we thought about where do we put this, because we also want to wholly and separately distinguish outdoor community art from signage, we decided other standards is probably the best place to put it, at least for now. So this section would set standards for artwork that might be installed on a building such as a mural, a mosaic, or a sculpture. We've seen some sculptures that have been mounted onto brick buildings. It sets standards for freestanding artwork on a site such as a sculpture or fountain. It allows for commemorative plaques on outdoor community art following the regulations of 5.1.2-r, which I previously covered. It establishes permitting requirements in order to verify that the art is not actually a sign and to confirm the location of installation. Because if we had somebody that wanted to put in a sculpture on their property, we would want to make sure that it's not blocking a sidewalk or it's not within a site triangle where it's going to create a traffic hazard. So we just want to know where it's going to go. And then it establishes expectations regarding upkeep and maintenance because we heard the board's concerns about what happens when they start to fade over time, then what? We don't want our downtown, you know, to look neglected. We want it to maintain its vibrancy. The proposed change to Chapter 11, you've seen this definition, just adds the definition for outdoor community art. So this is where it is defined in the Definitions Chapter for the ordinance for everyone's reference. So the next steps, what happens next? Because tonight is just an update. So the Board of Aldermen cannot take final action on the proposed language tonight. You've seen the text amendment. The public's seen the text amendment. It was attached to the memo. This is because the North Carolina General Statutes requires a hearing by Planning Board for a recommendation to the Aldermen in case of the text amendments. That is on schedule. It has been advertised for next Monday's Planning Board meeting. So we will have this for a hearing at Planning Board next Monday, and then we would propose to put this back on your schedule for September 2nd for your final hearing for consideration and adoption. This could be modified some following Planning Board's hearing, like we had with the rezoning tonight, where Planning Board says, yes, and we like this idea and we think it needs some additional modification, but it has been advertised for the August 11th Planning Board meeting and would come back to your docket on September 2nd. We just wanted to give you an update based on the charge that you gave us May 28th to research it and come up with a proposal that tries to find that middle way to allow the signs and try to create some order out of chaos. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, let's hear from the speakers who signed up first. I've got Bruce Frankel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick.
If you can make sure your mic's on.
It should be on now. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Ms. Garner for and the staff for the comprehensive effort to determine what is best for the town on this issue and create the proposed amendments to the UDO regarding murals. With your acceptance of the recommended proposal, we accomplish two objectives. Christina Parish can move forward with her excellent Kernersville Mural Festival, and second, it opens up the door for future discussion and actions to bring quality community art to our town for residents and visitors to appreciate. I think this is great news for all, and again, I just want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, any discussion questions? So this would be a multi-step process. It would be going from here to the Planning Board and back to us in September. So if anybody has comments that they think of, any residents of Kernersville have comments they think of that they want to suggest or ask questions about, there's plenty of time to do so. So board members have any questions tonight?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for all the hard work. That's a lot of work that she's been going through and your staff as well. So thank you for all this.
You did an amazing job, you and your staff, with the research and pulling together a lot of different threads and issues that really hadn't been addressed, like the ghost signs. And this will be great fun to see all of the signage that people come up with from the past that they might want to see back on their building. Thank you, JR, for your request. The staff look into it and do research. They've done a very thorough job, and I think that it was a good issue to take a closer look at.
Well, since I started this, I just want to echo what you just said because it was a monumental task that you and your staff engaged in, and you did such an outstanding job in putting it all together in that amount of time. Kudos to you and your staff. Thank you.
All right, any other comments, thoughts, questions on this item? Very, very good job. All righty, we are on to the next item on the agenda, consideration of a resolution to adopt the Northern Piedmont Hazard Mitigation Plan. And Michelle Brock is here from Emergency Services, Scott Alderman, our fire rescue chief. Michelle, we appreciate you being at a rather lengthy meeting waiting to present this to us, so thank you.
Hey, that's okay. I'm from emergency management. And so the chief and I are presenting the Hazard Mitigation Plan for adoption. If you want to go to the next slide? Or I, you want me, I can control it? All right, so the Hazard Mitigation Plan includes all the jurisdictions within Forsyth County, but it also includes seven counties total. It is a regional plan, and we do it this way for really for budgetary purposes and also because we have a lot of the same hazards that we are at risk from being affected by. So those seven counties are Davie, Yadkin, Surrey, Stokes, Rockingham, Caswell, and Forsyth. So why mitigation? Well, you've heard some examples tonight about why mitigation is important, but a couple of those things is to make sure that we are reducing the impacts, whether it be natural disasters, man-made disasters, technological disasters, and other types of hazards, which now we are including in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, even hazardous material-type impacts. So the plan, it identifies those risks, and we develop strategies in order to decrease our vulnerabilities here in Forsyth County. Benefits, you will hear it said quite often that every dollar in mitigation goes to save you $6 in recovery should that disaster happen to impact you. So there is cost on the front end sometimes, but it's going to save you money on the back end of things if you're impacted by a natural disaster or other type of disaster. Benefits, and you're going to hear the same theme several times, but one of the things that it does is it eases response and recovery to the hazards as well. And ultimately, what we're trying to do, and it's the same thing we do for most of our emergency management tasks, is to make our communities more resilient. So why update? We have to update this plan every five years. It is a FEMA requirement, and it is a requirement by North Carolina Emergency Management. So if we want to receive funding in this community for impacts from a disaster, we have to have a compliant updated mitigation plan in place. So not only are we thinking about the risks that we have, but we're also thinking about the risks that have changed and evolved since the last time we updated the plan, and I'll talk about a couple of those in a few minutes. Some of the actions that go into the plan are prevention, so you'll see mitigation actions in there. If you've reviewed the plan at all and you've looked at what Kernersville and Forsyth County has in the plan, several of these things are outlined in there inside of mitigation actions, property protection, public education and awareness, emergency services, natural resource management, and structural projects. So all of those have different types of projects or mitigation actions that would be included in those. So risk is really the frequency that the type of hazard could impact us, and then our vulnerability. So it's frequency multiplied by the vulnerability. So you'll see when we talk about how might a drought impact us, what kind of impact is it going to have on our county as a whole? And this is all in prediction. We look at historical data, but we're also trying to lean forward in our planning processes and think about things outside of the box. I like this graphic here. It's one of the best ones in the entire plan because it simplifies things for folks. So when they look at the things that our community is exposed to or has the highest risk of potentially being impacted by, at the very top, you'll see one that's just been recently added, and that is cyber. Because we have such a, people don't think about that as a hazard, but it really truly is something that we have to, we have to put things in place to prevent and to mitigate for cyber impacts. So excessive heat, I think this summer we have experienced a lot of excessive heat, and we're going to continue to experience that in the future as well. So it's one of the highest risks. A lot of people don't realize that of the hazards that we have, it actually has the most fatal... most fatalities associated with it. Tornadoes and thunderstorms and flooding, and then, of course, infectious diseases. And I think that has ringed true the last time that I presented on mitigation plan for the town of Kernersville was during the pandemic, and it was a virtual meeting. So you'll see moderate risks there. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I think they're all familiar to you. The one that, and every time I look at things, this plan is actually still in draft form. And so I actually emailed the consultant today and asked why the geological is in the moderate risk, and it happens to be, it's not one of our moderate risks, it's actually a low risk. So that is going to be changed. And so every once in a while with any plan, you're going to find things that don't exactly ring true, but that's really stood out to me today. So your geological risks are something like landslides, erosion, sinkholes. We don't have a lot of that in this area, so it is pretty much a low risk. But the rest of them there, we're all familiar with all of those types of risks. And so I know this is kind of hard to see, but this gives you an idea of how we come up with what is a high risk, a moderate, and a low risk. We put things in a monetary form, so how frequent does that occur in our community? What is the geographical impact? So how many people are actually going to be impacted by that particular hazard? And that gives us a better idea of what its total type of risk would be. So part of mitigation planning is to ensure that you have the public involved in creating the plan and giving you ideas about where the plan needs to go. So some of the things that were brought out in the public surveys, people were concerned about infrastructure vulnerability, and so if you look around, you're talking about the roads and flooding caused by roads and that kind of thing, so that makes sense. You know, how old are the dams within our community? And if you didn't know, we have about 230 dams in Forsyth County alone. Okay? So this plan actually looks at those types of vulnerabilities. So all of these hazards that we've named, it actually takes them individually and shows exactly what's happened in your community. And so it's a great document for reference. So if you want to know historically how many tornadoes have happened in your community, how many times tropical systems have happened in your community, then it's all laid out in the plan. And I strongly recommend that you take a look at some of that because I think most people would be surprised to see how many times tropical systems have actually come over Forsyth County. It makes it look like a spider web over the map, so take a look at that. Another thing the public was concerned about is cybersecurity threats, which is a valid concern. A lot of communities in North Carolina have gone through a lot of cyber issues, so definitely a concern. Resources accessibility during a crisis, that makes sense as well because we all know our resources run thin, particularly if we have a large geographical area that's all asking for the same resources. Public awareness and accountability, so people being accountable for their own safety, their own preparedness is also a concern. And I'm glad to see that the public's concerned about that because that's one of my concerns as an emergency manager, is that folks want to rely on us to come help them when they really should have done some preparation ahead of time on their own. So we've added some mitigation actions in the upcoming plan countywide, and I just wanted to point out here that there's a couple of those that are focused on cybersecurity, providing more training for our community and for our partners. And so we're already doing that with emergency management. You can always go and, or you can always contact us and see what kind of training we have coming up. And another one is due to extreme heat, and so we've added a mitigation action for that as well, because we know, we're kind of leaning forward a little bit, knowing that extreme heat's only going to get worse, and some things are only going to get worse as time goes on. So these are the components of the plan. It talks about the planning process, what goes into it, what the communities are made up of, you know, what's the population, what's the demographics? And it also identifies all the individual hazards and how they impact each of the communities, which I guess could also be considered a hazard profile. It also goes over a vulnerability assessment, a capability assessment, and the capability is just how well can your community respond or recover from a disaster? And you'll be happy to know that Kernersville scored high on that, so it's, not all communities did, most of them are in the middle moderate phase, but Kernersville, along with Forsyth County and Winston-Salem scored high on the capabilities. And when you're talking about capabilities, you're talking about all of your community resources and the things that you put into your local government to help your community be more resilient, which would include your fire chief. That's also your emergency manager. Mitigation actions, so there's a section that talks about the mitigation actions for each one of the communities, and each community is defined, and then how the plan is maintained. And there are several appendices, I'm not going to go through all of them, but they tend to be the more lengthy pieces of the document, and so they take them and put them in the back of the document. A lot of them are, several of them are sign-off, you know, who all signed the plan, which each jurisdiction does. So I think there's 37 total jurisdictions that are outlined in the plan. Our emergency management director, the size of the file of this plan kind of drives him crazy. So he wants, he asked the consultant to pull apart all of, pull out the Forsyth County specific information and put it in our own annex. So that way it will be easier for you to see rather than having to go or look at every jurisdiction and pull out pieces that you want. So that is to come. It's not available yet, but the consultant's working on it. So what does this mean for you? And so we hope that you will vote to adopt the plan. So approving the plan for Kernersville, and then, of course, implementing the plan and the mitigations, mitigation actions that are outlined for the community. So it may be up to you to come up with some funding that is specified for some of those mitigation actions. And then, of course, advocating for mitigation. Thinking about mitigation when you're doing your land use planning is extremely important. So just wanted to point that out because I'm here and, you know, as I've been here this evening, all of these things, they ring a bell, and emergency manager's mind, it's kind of like when I go down the road, go down the highway, I see all the tanker trucks, and I'm reading the placards and going, oh, God, right? Because I know what's on there. But same goes for mitigation. So when I hear things about land use and road, additional roads and additional impervious areas, then my mind goes to mitigation. So we have a great plan. Plans are awesome, but relationships are better, so it helps you out. A strong team is better than the best written plans. And so I think we have a strong emergency management team, so it's not just the five people in our emergency management office. We strongly rely on our partners out in the community, so. Any questions about the mitigation plan from myself or from Chief Alderman?
Chief Alderman and Doran, if y'all could come forward, and Michelle, if you'll yield the podium to them for just a moment. So you've given us a memo that you've recently attended a meeting to review the draft 2025 update. So I just wanted to hear your thoughts as to the town of Kernersville, our historic participation in this, and because as Michelle said, it's a very large document, so I just want to hear that y'all were very hands-on in this process, so I'd like to hear from both of you about that.
Sure. So Doran and I attended meetings regarding the plan, and we met with the consultant and emergency management and discussed the components that were specific to the town of Kernersville. And we reviewed those, and we concur with what their findings were. There were some recommendations regarding adding a generator to a shelter location in the upcoming plan year, or plan years, I should say, it's a five-year plan. And so that's something that I've taken on and I'm going to be working on to hopefully see that that is done over the next five years. And then Doran is working on the stormwater piece of that, and I don't know if you want to speak to anything that was in there regarding stormwater gauges on creeks or anything like that.
No, not any details. This is not a new plan, it's just an upgrade in existing plan, so we will follow those suggested upgrades with our day-to-day operations and our yearly budgeting for it. And like the chief said, one of them is stream gauges, which we've already been talking about anyway. So in the end, you had mentioned maybe some resource allocations, but for the most part, we had already planned for most of those anyway, so it's not a big deal for us to implement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's one thing to see it written in amendments, another thing to hear it, so we appreciate you updating us about that. And then Michelle said the action you need tonight is the Board of Alderman approval of the plan?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
And then you'll probably, you and others on your team will probably be going to a lot of different places in these several counties with the same effort. Has anybody else adopted it yet?
I think Clements has, was it Clements or Lewisville? One of the western jurisdictions, I think, is already approved.
Okay, thank you.
But other counties, I'm not involved in that.
Just Forsyth.
Just Forsyth County, yes, ma'am.
And then does, does anyone have any questions? They're talking about something down there, so. Go ahead.
Excuse me, I want to know what the plan is. You want us to vote on something? What's the plan?
So.
Have you not got it written out, like, you know?
We don't have the link to the actual plan. We just have the resolution.
Well, it sounds like we'll be spending money here, and of course, I'd kind of like to know what we'll be signing up for.
Yeah, we sent the link over, so I'm not sure what happened with that, but it's, the PDF is so large that you can't email it, so you have to, it's a shared link in order to be able to access it.
Okay.
What's the deadline for adopting it?
I think it has already been approved by state emergency management, and if I'm not mistaken, by FEMA already pending your adoption. The expiration date, I think, is September 6th, something like that.
So we do have another meeting at the end of August, but it is a continuation of efforts we've been doing before and an update. You know, it doesn't have the Forsyth County information broken out yet, so.
No, you're not spending any money on the plan. The planning piece is paid for, so there's no money that you are delegating to the planning piece. In fact, when we do, when we update the mitigation actions, we define whether that mitigation action has been completed or whether it hasn't been completed. If it has not been completed, we have to just say why that was not met. There's really no black mark or anything. We just, we either update it and say we're going to do it in the next planning cycle, but there's no money to be, specifically to be spent on the plan itself.
Could you, is it possible to send us a link, like right now, that we could look at? We could just stand in recess and give the board an opportunity to see what the draft is, and if they would rather have more time with it, then we could move this item to a different meeting. Our next, our next meeting looks like it's August 27th.
Madam Mayor, I mean, I'm all for planning, you know, for any disaster, anything else, but I'd like to kind of know what we're talking about.
That's what I'm asking.
More so than just the slides and all of that stuff.
That's why I'm asking to see if she can send, and we'll take a recess, you could scroll through it.
I like it, but you know, just feel like I need more.
It looks like the agenda item intended to attach the plan. I wondered when I was reviewing it why I only saw the resolution. Public Services Director Doran Malpa and I recently attended a meeting to review the draft 2025 update attached and provide input. We concur with the adoption of the 2025 plan update, but the only thing attached is the resolution.
Madam Mayor, to sort of follow up on John's question, Doran and Chief Alderman had reviewed it, and Chief Alderman mentioned something about the need possibly in the next budget year for a generator. And a question arose in my mind as to if we had a type of a disaster where a hurricane came through, and where would our headquarters be here in Kernersville, and what kind of generator, you know, are we talking about? What kind of money would we be talking about? Because that's, that's a very tangible way that we could certainly get caught short if we don't have, you know, the capability to provide utilities to a central command post, if you will. Those are just some questions that came to mind, and I don't know that they necessarily need to be answered before we approve a plan itself, but I think it would be helpful for us to have a little more time to take a look at the details.
Mr. Swisher, do you want to, I mean, are you familiar with many of these plans that do you want to address the issue? And is there a way to send it to us, to our email, like right now?
That I don't know, but my suggestion would be, even if you get it in your email tonight, a five-minute, 10-minute recess is not going to be enough time to look at all of it. I would suggest just putting it on the August 26th agenda, and we'll work on getting the link to you, however that might be, because it's, I mean, it's several hundred pages, and even the best of the speed readers probably aren't going to be able to get through it tonight.
So I'm happy to forward the link, and there's no way to, he's right, it's 1,500 pages. I mean, it's a huge plan, so that's why, you know, we've gone to the lengths of getting all of the Forsyth County information extracted so that it can be looked at more easily.
Is it possible to give like an executive summary of what the plan, I mean, a meetup, what the plan is saying and will do in like two or three paragraphs or something like that? Just like a overall review of the plan? Is that possible? I don't know.
Yeah, I think so.
And she can, when she puts that together, Chief Alderman, they can send it, she can send it to Chief Alderman, he can send it to either mayor and send it directly to you And I think August, whatever, August 26th, that'll still meet. And I think August, whatever, August 26th, that'll still meet the deadline of September the 6th.
Yeah, the concern would be if we don't have a plan, we would not be eligible for the federal funding for reimbursement in the event of an emergency, because having the plan is required. If you read closely the resolution that is attached, it sets that for.
Did they have a plan up in the mountains when they had all them floods?
Yes.
They did. Didn't work too good, did it? They still cleaning the mess up up there.
Do we need to vote to table this until?
Yes, I'd like a motion, please.
So we can get a better feel for exactly what it is.
Make a motion to table item 2D.
And second.
To our next meeting.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, we'll see you back, hopefully. Or you can tell Chief Alderman what to cover. Hopefully you can come back. We'll put you at the very beginning. How about that? I'd like to see this set for the, right after any public hearings, right after speakers from the floor. So we'll tackle it upfront. All right, Mr. Swisher, we're moving on to E. We're talking about sewer.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Board, as you all are aware, DOT, at some point in time, it's already been past time a few times, but they are going to begin work on the Big Mill Farm Road extension, and that work will also include a lot of work on the Hopkins Road, especially the portion from Bluff School Road to West Mountain Street. As I've mentioned to you all before, there's currently a sewer line that just serves the gas station at the corner of Mountain Street, runs under Hopkins Road, through the middle of the Skate World property, and then back down on the eastern corner over toward Oakmont. That sewer line will need to be something done with it when the road's done, but I think the initial plan from DOT is to leave it where it is. We were approached by the owner of the old Skate World property, who is willing to donate the right-of-way and the land necessary to relocate that sewer line up to Mountain Street. So we've looked at it, relocating the sewer line there. We can relocate it in a way that it will allow for some property to the west of there, a couple of parcels to the west, and also to the north over near, across the railroad tracks there at Tally's Crossing, if they ever choose to, to develop more than what they can currently develop with their current setup, because it's a septic tank. So we've looked at it. We've talked to, to a firm about it. You have in your packet the design proposal for that line, to design it so that it can pick up property to the west. It would also allow for that property, not only that property, to redevelop to the west, but it also allow for better redevelopment of the Skate World property, because currently the way the sewer line runs through that property, the way it is, is kind of the way it will have to be. So if it's relocated up to Mountain Street, it can relocate a little, not relocate, it can redevelop a little more densely than what it currently is developed. So we think it's a good use of our water sewer fund or city county utilities. For that relocation, tonight, we're asking the board to approve the scope of work and fee proposal for the designs, design of that sewer line. It is LBHD engineering and also RPM partners down on Mountain Street. Here, you have that scope of work in your packet. They would design the sewer line, we would then put it out to bid, and of course, bring that cost back to you as well for approval. Tonight, the fee proposal is $19,070. You see what that entails, development of engineered utility plans, permit submission of WSFC utilities in the town, coordinate with DOT for the compliance to relocate that into their roadway. Also coordinate and provide as-built surveys, and coordination of bidding, some middle review and onsite meeting and inspections, and submission of the final as-built and plan for recording. So we're asking the board to approve that. We'll get the, get it designed, put it out to bid, bring it back to you all for approval on that final bid as well.
Who pays for the new sewer line?
Excuse me?
Who pays for the new sewer line?
We will ultimately ask the town, the board, to pay for that using the sewer fund money.
Okay.
For that expansion of that line. This is very similar, I think you were on the board, I know the mayor was, to the project that we did on Old Greensboro Road, on the north side of Old Greensboro Road, where we extended it up to the property right there a little bit west of Lamille Floors. You know, Lamille came in, built a new building. They ran a sewer line. We ran it for them and extended it to the next property up, so that when someone came in, they could connect to that. So this is pretty similar, that project would be pretty similar as well in cost of doing so.
Just want to make sure I figure that. I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, second by Alderman Apple. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, item F, Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, Board, you all remember about a month or two ago, I think you all adopted an ordinance regarding the speed limit in the school zone on Tig Lane. You have another ordinance tonight, but the only thing it does is eliminate the portion that was in existence by DOT. They had a 30-mile, 35-mile per hour school zone at Caleb's Creek Elementary on Tig Lane from 600 foot south of Old Salem Road to 500 foot south of Salem Crossing Road. You all adopted from a point, .31 miles south of Old Salem Road, northward to Caleb's Creek. So what you all adopted is a little bit more, more long, it's a longer stretch. So you're eliminating the part that was adopted by DOT and effectively putting in, to affect the part that you all adopted last month, or two months ago. Is that right, Keith?
Yes, I believe it was April, and DOT apologized for not including this in the earlier request.
Okay, do I have a motion? I had a motion by Alderman Barrow and a second by Alderman Apple. Does that sound good? All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, item G, Mr. Swisher?
You have in your packet a memo from Chief Alderman to myself, Franz Zader, Finance Director, requesting to sell radios to Smith Grove Fire Department. As you all may remember, we've now sold two different departments some radios. This will be the third one. We're asking to sell those, sell them three radios at the cost of $1,075 per radio, or total cost of $3,225.
How many more if we left to sell?
Oh, how many we've got left? How many you got, how many you got left, Chief?
Not many more.
Not many.
Well, they better, better ask for them.
Better hurry up.
Curtis, that's item I. The board just approved item F.
That's all right. We're going to do item I, and we'll back up to item H.
If we approve item I?
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Apple, second by Alderman Barrow. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, so we are going to back up to?
Item H.
G, maybe?
No, we didn't. Yeah. Hell, I skipped a bunch of them, didn't I? Sorry, it wasn't all that important. We'll just move on. So G, that's what the chief started smiling about. I'm surprised he didn't throw something at me, because that, that's as important when he's not all that worried about the radios. Item G, and I'm surprised Chief Tillie didn't hit me in the head. I skipped H, too. All right, well, so anyway, item G, as you all are aware, you approved six new personnel for the fire rescue truck that we're to be getting in, hopefully in January of 2026. So we have another vacancy coming open as well, so that's seven folks. So met with the chief, met with Crystal. We have the seven folks coming on, and we have seven folks now that have applied that we think would be good candidates. So it's what we're asking the board, instead of waiting until January for us to hire these folks, we're asking the board to allow us to bring them in beginning October the 2nd, and we will put them through basically a training school here at the town. We'll put them through an academy at the town. Our folks will coordinate the classes, teach them, get them their certifications. And by the time we get through that academy, they'll be ready to go, go on into the fire department at the same time the truck arrives. The benefit of doing this, of course, is, is we get to train the folks. It's our folks doing the training. And also, we don't run the risk of sending them to a fire academy or them going to a fire academy in Greensboro, Winston, and going to work for those folks. We think, we've seen it happen, we know what happened. We don't usually do this, but when we have this many candidates at one time, we've done it, I think, maybe one time in the past, before Chief Alderman. So we have done it. It works out well, so we're asking the board to do that. With this group, as you see, we think we can pretty much cover all of the cost of it with the savings that we'll have from some vacancies. When you compare that to the cost of the trainees, and then we, they have an item that was in the budget that they're probably not going to get this year, so we can about cover all of that cost, maybe $5,000 or $10,000, but likely all of it, just depending on how it lines up with the insurance and everything, savings as well. So we're asking the board, essentially, to give us permission to go ahead and bring those folks in, starting October 2nd, 2025. Get them trained and have them ready when the, when the truck gets here.
I think this is an excellent idea, because we also have retirements in December, I think, in the fire department. So this is a great opportunity for some newer firefighters to the town of Kernersville to work with some very experienced firefighters and share that local experience. So, and we bought the truck, and we hire people in order to have that capacity available for emergencies. So I think starting in the fall is excellent for that, because you never know what'll happen in the winter months.
I agree. Probably a good time to hire, too.
It is. Might catch a few.
And we're not the, I mean, it's not unusual to do an in-house training program. The sheriff also does that for law enforcement training, and it's, I need to think about, like sheriff's deputies, they're doing their PT, you know, running around downtown Winston-Salem, which will be, and in Forsyth County, they're getting hands-on experience in their training time for the community they'll be serving. So, I mean, I think that's got that benefit, too, because we've designed a lot of drills and a lot of training in our, our training facility designed for situations we've encountered in the town of Kernersville. And so they'll have the benefit of that right from the start in their fire service. It seems like an excellent idea. Thank you for looking at the budget again and fine-tuning this item with your recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Same move.
Got a motion for approval by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. All in favor? It's unanimous.
So item H is the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. We've applied for this grant and received it probably for 20 years, somewhere in there. It's a 75-25 match, so it's basically 81, $82,000. We'll put up about $20,500, or actually, we'll receive $20,500, and we'll put up the 61.5. This is already in the budget. We're just asking for the board to approve this, our application.
Same move.
Second.
I've got a motion for approval by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, second by Alderman Gorham. All in favor? It's unanimous. It's a program that's worked really well. I think the first year, we weren't sure if we'd get funding past the five years, but it's, it's been a very good, solid program as well.
It has.
And now we're protected back at Curtis's head.
Yeah.
But definitely back to that agenda item.
Covered everybody's items now.
That's right. All right, what are we on to now?
Item J.
All right.
Is the first budget amendment for this year. I won't go over everything in it. Most everything in it is carryover, items that were budgeted last year, were not purchased, or the money has been unspent. The largest of those is the fire rescue truck, the equipment for that, and then we have some sidewalks, Harmon Lane, West Mountain Street, some portions of those sidewalks as well. There are two items in the budget amendment I would like to just tell the board about. They're in the budget amendment. If the board doesn't, we'll move forward with them. You can still approve the budget amendment, and then we'll just pull them out. The first of those is an item that you, that we're asking you to approve, the sole source purchase on here in just a minute, is the event tied recording system in the police department. This is the system that we use to record all of the calls. It is very old, probably 15, 20 years old. It's been asked for in the budget for several years and has not been in the budget, and it just recently kind of shorted out, so to speak. And it no longer works, and we can't get support for it, we can't get parts. So it is in the budget amendment. The chief has covered that cost, so there's not any new appropriation to purchase that. And the other one is in portion recreation. As you all remember, we budgeted $140,000 for an excavator. Ernie was able to purchase that excavator for about $115,000 to $120,000. So we have in the budget a tractor that we're going to purchase, a small tractor with the difference in the money. So those two items are new purchases that were not in the budget, that we're able to purchase using the same amount of money that was originally budgeted. Everything else in the budget amendment, again, the budget amendment's about 2.9 million, and I think 2.958, and I think 2.9 of that is items that were budgeted last year and carried over into this year. So I'll be glad to answer any questions the board might have regarding any of those items in the budget amendment.
Do you want to skip ahead to item 5A then, since it's?
No, you can just do this and then do 5A. You don't have to do it, you don't have to do 5A first.
So you're saying if we don't approve 5A, then we'll take that out of this budget amendment?
It will come out, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion for approval of the proposed budget amendment number one? Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson?
Second.
A second by Alderman Apple. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, we are to the consent agenda. These matters are considered to be routine by the Board of Alderman and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the matter will be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the following item: A, approval of minutes for the June 25 regular meeting; B, approval of minutes for the July 8 regular meeting. Would any board member like to remove either of these minutes from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, any staff or citizen at this meeting desire to see either of these removed? All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Same move.
Got a motion for approval from Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, second from Alderman Gorham. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, Mr. Swisher, let's, let's handle 5A.
5A is, is the Carolina recording system. That is what I just explained to the board, the event tied. NextLog, again, that records all of the calls that come into our 911 center. Ours is no longer working, or at least not working like it should. So we're in need to purchase that. We're recommending purchasing that from Carolina Recording Systems. That's who we've used before. That's who our system is compatible with. The sole source bid procedure is being used to acquire that piece of equipment. If the board so approves, it does require board approval of the attached resolution authorizing them to be the sole source vendor.
All right, any questions, concerns, discussion, or do I have a motion?
Same move.
Got a motion for approval by Alderman Apple?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. All in favor? It's unanimous. Item B?
Item B, we've discussed this several times, especially when we were discussing the lower soccer fields down at Ivy Redmond. We were approached by Fusion Soccer, who is also a soccer association, much like Carolina Core or Core. Fusion approached Ernie Pages and myself with the idea of lighting the top two fields at Ivy Redmond, Field 6 and 7. Those are currently the open play fields. They asked. They asked, said, hey, we'll we'll put the lights on them at our expense. We'll install them, we'll buy the lights, install them, run the wiring, all of that at our expense. If the town will let us use the fields, the rent, you know, whatever we pay in rent, we'll go toward what we pay for the lights. And then, of course, once basically you reach the same amount, then they they have to start paying like everybody else. Exactly the same type of agreement that we worked out with Core on the turf field. So we have made it. The board gave the go-ahead on that. The lights are up. I think I emailed you all last week and said, hey, if you're out that way swinging, see them? The lights are up and there's eight lights up on the field. The two fields, there's two on each side, then two only, one on each end of each field. So we have those up. We're in the process, you have an easement as your next item to get all of those lit and they will be up and running. We anticipate probably, you know, they'll probably use them about four hours, five hours a night. So it was about $80,000, $75,000 to $80,000 to get them installed. We anticipate them probably in about 150 days or so, they will have their $80,000 out in use. So you have that agreement before you tonight, pretty basic agreement, just says, hey, we let you put these up. We get the lights when you're gone and then you start paying us. So so turned out to be a good deal. We did also a very similar deal. Some of you were on the board, I think Alderman Thompson was, with Kernersville Little League on the lights out, the baseball fields, except for basically, we just, we got used to those fields for putting up the lights. And then once our use, once our, we met the same amount, basically what it costs to put up the lights. And the use was over with, we no longer had the fields. So now if we use them, we pay for them. So be glad to answer any questions. Ernie's here, he can also answer any that you might have.
If we approve the field use agreement?
Second.
I've got a motion by Alderman Apple, second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? All right, and then the Energy United easement?
You have the easement in your packet. We've we've been working with them. There's just one thing that we're requesting. If Energy United agrees to it, fine. If not, fine. It's no big deal. There is, there's a method for it otherwise. But it says in there in the last paragraph to having to hold. And basically, Energy United, Duke Energy, all of them have the same language. It just says forever. So we're like, you know, we don't really like forever. So we put until such time as Grantor may make a different use of the said property. Again, the language is about the same regardless of who it is, probably 95% of ones we have say forever. So what they want you to do is just come back in and request an abandonment of the easement, which that's no problem. They agree to this, we'll sign it. What I'm asking for tonight is for the board to approve it with the written language or with forever. Because we're fine with it either way. We just thought we'd try our luck and see if they'd agree to the written language. They may not, but if they don't, we'll go through the same process we do now. We'll just, you know, submit a request to abandon the easement at such time the easement is not needed. We do that. Now with all of them, unless they agree to change the language, it's a template document, they send it out. Duke Powers or Duke's a little bit worse than Energy United, they go on the easement. They just generally don't even tell you where they're going on the property. They just put it across all property. Here, it's a very small easement. It's, I think, five foot on either side of a three-foot burial cable. And it just runs probably maybe 200 feet. So it's not very big anyway. So if we never abandon it, we're really not out anything. But I just thought I'd send it to the guy and say, hey, we do it this way just to see. So if the board will approve that with either either language in it, we'll see what which one we get to choose from.
So moved.
Got a motion for approval by Alderman Gorham?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, all in favor? It's unanimous.
So I have one more item, kind of an announcement and then a request. For those of you that don't know, Crystal Tanner, our longtime HR director, has informed me that starting January 1, she'll no longer be the HR director. She is going to retire at the end of December. So we will start the process of filling her position and thus comes the request. Instead of filling that position in January, you know, they're a small department, they've got five folks. We'll advertise it internally. We get folks, fine. If we don't, we'll go externally. There's a very good chance that there's some movement in the department one way or the other. And even if there's not, then we know we're going to have a new HR director. So with a department that's small, Crystal has suggested, hey, bring these folks in, get them hired by October the 16th, it's only a couple of months. That way they can start working with a person that's in that position currently. If the same person doesn't stay in it, if the same person does stay in it, then we, the new HR director will will work with Crystal for a couple of months. But with a small, small department like that, if we do see some internal movement, you know, then you you got folks in new positions, all of that, so it'd be good. And if we bring someone in from the outside, good to work with Crystal. So requesting basically to to fill those vacancies starting in October instead of January 1.
Hey, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous.
And I don't think I have anything else.
Feel like we should clap, would that be all right?
Not that we're glad to see you go, but you're deserving of the retirement, okay?
Thank you.
I think a really fond memory in the town of Kernersville for me is Curtis presented Crystal with employee of the year and then announced, and she'll be our new HR director. So Crystal's been with the town for an entire career and and been in so many different positions. We just so appreciate you and all that you've brought to to being the HR director for the town of Kernersville and all the changing and all the hiring and everything that has happened over the time of your tenure. So thank you. Y'all got me crying. Oh my goodness. Curtis, you've made some good hires, keep up the good work. You've made some good hires, keep up the good work.
They make you look good, Curtis.
You sure do. All right. Do you have anything else to present this evening? Okay, and then it looks like there's a motion for a closed session. Mr. Powell, do you have anything other than that?
No, I don't have anything other than that.
All right, and then matters to be presented by the mayor and Board of Aldermen. Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, do you have any?
No ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow?
Yeah, I talked to you at the last meeting about speeding on Manorwood Drive. And I wanted to inform you that the chief is taking care of that. It's not an ongoing problem. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Mr. Apple?
No ma'am, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back to town with the lovely pictures Bill sent me. I was wondering if he would really come back, but welcome back.
Thank you very much. It's good to be back.
Mr. Gorham?
I just want to say to chief, the officer that you sent out, we had that conversation over the phone. I think it was Curtis, better situation. And one of your officers went out and handled it very, very well. Trying to remember what his name was, it was a long time ago, a couple of weeks ago. Is it Adams or huh? Adams, Officer Adams? Yeah, the gentleman in regards to that called me back and said, hey, what an outstanding job that Officer Adams did in handling that situation. And I would just like for you to just pass that on to him. He did a great job and we're very appreciative of how he handled himself and how he represented our great town of Kernersville.
Thank you. All right, so a lot covered, a lot of ground we covered tonight. And then some more, some more that got set off to future meetings with the changes to the sign ordinance and the hazard mitigation plan. So we'll have our work cut out for us between now and and those future meetings. But it looks like we have a motion for a closed session.
Madam Mayor, I hear about making motion that the board go to closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1183 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to reserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges here by acknowledging pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.115 to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agent concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract, a proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Gorham, second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Welcome back to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. The closed session has ended. Is there any further business before the board this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, second by Alderman Gorham. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you for joining us. This meeting is now adjourned.